Hello, everyone, and welcome to the June 23rd, 2025 Carpenteria City Council Meeting. And roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Solorsino.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Mayor.
Here.
Councilmember Nomura.
Here.
And Mayor Alarcon.
Here. And please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, living, free, and justice for all.
We will now move on to introductions, proclamations, and presentations. Our first item is the Employee Service Awards, and I will go ahead and open up public comment. I do not have any speaker slips for the first item. Do we have any on Zoom, Stephen?
There are no raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and officially close public comment and bring it back to staff for presentation.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers Ryan Kentz, Assistant City Manager. Yes, we are really excited to present two Employee Service Awards this evening. I know they're here in the building, but I'm hoping they're hearing me now and will come running in. If not, I'll text Teresa. But yes, two Employee Service Awards, Mayor. And I believe you have them at your dais there, so I'll turn it over to you to read them. But let me make sure the staff are here.
Oh, wait, yeah.
We're ready to go.
Cindy's right over here.
Yeah. We're ready to go.
Okay, perfect. So we will start with, here we go, Cindy Sauter. So in appreciation of five years of loyal and dedicated service to the city of Carpenteria, five years of service, we commend your professionalism, integrity, and service to the residents of Carpenteria. On behalf of the City Council, staff, and community, we extend our sincere appreciation and best wishes. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's funny, five years is, it's gone by really fast, but then when I think about it, like, all the changes that have happened in our city in the five years, like, new city manager, completely, you know, now we have a majority female City Council. We didn't have that five years ago. It was all men when I started. A new city manager, we've got lots of new staff. So, um, yeah, I really, I enjoy working here and hope to be here many more years.
Excellent. Well, we'd love to present you with this certificate. Yeah, come on up and we can take a photo. I'd now like to present a Service Award for Nick Bobrov. In appreciation of 20 years of loyal and dedicated service to the city of Carpenteria, we commend your professionalism, integrity, and service to the residents of Carpenteria. And on behalf of the City Council, staff, and community, we extend our sincere appreciation and best wishes. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you. I'd just like to echo a lot of what Cindy has said. In the 20 years, a lot has changed, and yet it's still a great place to live and work. I've got a little bit more gray hair than when I started. You know, I started as the Assistant Planner, as kind of the young pup in the department, and now I'm the old man who's helping to lead the way and helping usher in a new crop of folks to help keep the city going in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, and we'd love to present this to you and take a photo. Would the council like to share any words?
I mean, I'm still quite new, but hopefully it'll go by 20 years quickly, right? But I think that, you know, from starting as just a citizen and watching how community development has, like, changed as a concept for our city, we're so lucky to have these two people running this program and leading the charge with so much optimism and forward-thinking and, you know, keeping Carpenteria in mind at all times. It's really evident in their work, so I'm appreciative.
Sure. And I'll just say, Nick and Cindy and their whole shop do so much work behind the scenes that nobody ever sees, but we get a little hint of it through the staff reports, and I just, I appreciate the way both of them are just so dedicated to making sure that we and the public are well-informed about the changes and projects happening in Carp. So thank you, guys, both of you.
I would like to say the same. I'll echo what the council has said. A lot of the work that we do is all because of, the great work is because of the staff. They do their homework, they do it quite well. I would like to say, I've been with the city for 30 years, and I have yet to see such a tight group of people working together, so thank you very much. Nick, I know you've got some gray hairs, but I'm standing ahead of you, thanks.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. You both do terrific work, and, you know, Nick especially has so much experience and really, really knows about the city and knows what the community wants and how to get us there. So thanks again.
And I'd like to just not only echo what my colleagues have said, but I really appreciate both Cindy and Nick for all of the work that you all do behind the scenes. It is more than I could ever imagine, and I appreciate your dedication and just thoughtfulness in the work that you do and that you present, so thank you. The next item on our agenda is item number two, which is the Carpenteria Summerland Fire Protection District Presentation Regarding Its Services, Mutual Aid Assistance, and Interaction with the City of Carpenteria by Fire Chief Robert Kovak and Fire Marshal Mike LaMonaco in Santa Barbara County Fire Safe Council Presentation on its Mission, Vision, Programs, Resources, and Current/Future Involvement with the City of Carpenteria by Kate Furlong, Community Resilience Domain Lead. Thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council members, for having us here today. As stated, I'm Robert Kovak. I'm the Fire Chief for the Carpenteria Summerland Fire Protection District. When I get into my presentation, I'll show you exactly what that area means. I'm with our Fire Marshal, Mike LaMonaco. He's going to talk about some of the fire presentation, and then I'll let this young lady present for the Fire Safe Council. So really, I'm here to present who we are, what we do, more importantly, how we interact and collaborate and cooperate with the city, more particularly your city staff. We do it on a regular basis, and I think it's good, you know, to tell the council and the public listening how we work well together on a regular basis, and basically who we are and what we do for our fire protection districts. So let's go to the first slide. This is going to be the things I'm going to talk about. I'm going to talk about our district boundaries, the structure of the organization for our fire district, the services we provide, the resources and the mutual aid assistance we get for this area and what we provide around our area. And the important part is the interaction with the city of Carp, coordination during major emergencies, emergency management, Emergency Operations Center, Office of Emergency Management, those things, collaboration with the City Building and Planning Department. Mike's going to be talking about that. He works with them quite a bit. And then joint community events. I'm going to get into some of the events we do on a regular basis. The primary one is at Avocado Festival, the CERT program, CPR classes at the high school, and we interact with the lifeguard training and the staffing, and that'll conclude it. So let's go to the next slide. So let's start out by our fire district boundary. We have a pretty extensive boundary. It goes from the Ventura County line to Ortega Ridge, and you could see in the lower corner what part of that is the city boundary. So the city boundary is within our area, but we're vast beyond that. We carry all the way up into literally the foothills of the Los Padres National Forest. We work with them on vegetation fires up in that area, but it's also within our boundaries. And we go all the way up against the Montecito Fire Protection District and up against the Ventura County Fire on the other side. Kind of hard to tell on this slide, but I put where the two fire stations are. One's pretty much right in the middle of Carpenteria on Wallon Avenue, and then we have a fire station in Summerland, in downtown proper Summerland, planning on maybe a central station in the near future, kind of in the middle between those two. You can see on the right side, we started, we were formed in 1934, so our 100th anniversary is coming up, not too far down the road, and we cover over 40 square miles. Okay, here's our structure. I'll just go over it quickly. So we have a Board of Directors that I report to. Summerland is your City Council, but it's a Board of Directors as a fire district. I report to them. I have staff underneath me, administrative captain, two administrative assistants, and then there's three shifts of firefighters and a fire prevention bureau. Each shift is commanded by a battalion chief. And then down on the bottom is our main fire station 61 on 9/11 Walnut, our station in Summerland, and then we have a head, our fire headquarters is on Eugenia Place, right here in downtown Carpenteria. Here's the services we provide, and this is just a general highlight. We provide many more detailed things, but I didn't want to make this too long, so these are the key things. Obviously, we're an all-risk agency. We respond to fires, mostly also to medical emergencies. Wildland fires up in the foothills is kind of the primary area. Rescue's all the time. We have a very strong water rescue program. It's for the ocean and during floods for the creeks. We have trail rescues up on the trails around us. Technical rescues is like over-the-side vehicles that are on steep embankments where we have to use ropes to rescue people out of the area or high angle. And then USAR is called Urban Search and Rescue. That's if there's, like, building collapse for earthquakes or just any reason a building would collapse and people are trapped inside of that. We're trained to handle all those things. I call it transportation accidents, so it isn't just vehicle accidents. We do bike, we do train, but we get a lot of 101 freeway accidents. A lot of those in the eight miles that we cover for the freeway. It's pretty regular. I wouldn't say it's every day, but it's close to almost being every day. We're on the freeway for, I don't know how people can crash on straight sections of the freeway, but they do, so we go to that quite a bit. Hazardous conditions, power lines is common, odors, hazmat releases or chemicals that the citizens see. We assist the public on a regular basis if they just have a request to, you know, for any kind of public assistance. We get a lot of those. We call those the non-emergency, the code twos. And then, of course, we do public education with emergency preparedness, our Ready, Set, Go program, which she's probably going to talk a little bit about. We do CPR, AED training, and CPR training at the high school. And then for fire prevention, I'll let Mike add on to this. We do fire prevention, code enforcement, and vegetation management. Mike, do you have anything to add on that?
Well, I think, I think one thing is, first and foremost, it seems like a great day to actually be here because we're celebrating both Nick and Cindy and their achievements, and I work with them on a daily basis, and the city is truly blessed to have them as part of that team.
Thank you, Mike. So daily, we have two fire engines, one at each station. We have a squad, which is used for the higher-level medical emergencies, and we have an on-duty battalion chief. That's our minimum staffing. When we have significant predicted events like red flag alerts or big storms, and we think there's going to be some flooding potential, we do what is called up-staffing. So we have backup rigs sitting at our station that we can now bring our off-duty personnel in, and we will staff up to the extent we need to. We've actually had some of these major floods where we call it all hands. Everybody is working. We tuck them in every corner of fire station and staff every apparatus we have because we know something's going to happen. So we get to that level if we need to, and it does happen at least annually in this county. So we have reserve engines. We have two brush trucks. We have what is called a brush patrol, which is a smaller unit to get really in the tight areas. We have two rescue water crafts that can get out in the ocean. We get called quite a bit out there for whether it's somebody in trouble swimming, whether they're kayaking, whether they're sailboarding and they get blown out to sea, or even if there's a boat in trouble right off our shore. We'll initially go out there with harbor patrol coming from the harbor to go see what's going on, see what we can do. We have a UTV, we call it. It's an off-road vehicle to get up in our trails. We can go all the way up to the top of the trails when people regularly get hurt or go down because of weather, or they twist an ankle, you name it. We go up there quite a bit. And then we just have miscellaneous support vehicles. We do quite a bit of automatic and mutual aid around us, so when our two stations can't handle larger incidents by themselves, we have support coming from Montecito. We have it coming from Ventura County. And if we even need more support, it'll come from Santa Barbara City, Santa Barbara County, and even agencies in North County if needed. And we go there when they need help. So we, fire agencies are very good about helping each other. When we had the Thomas Fire come through here, we had hundreds, if not thousands, firefighters protecting this area, protecting this city. And the way we pay them back is when they get their big fires, we send what we can to go help them. We do that across the state. California is very robust, automatic, and mutual aid system. We have to have it because we have the big incidents here. Okay, the interaction with the city. We coordinate and we communicate with your staff during a major event when we know there's a predicted major storm, or we know there's potential wildfires or evacuations going on. We work with city staff within the city areas and talk to them. The thing is there, you may have a county-wide recommendation for evacuations, which comes from the Office of Emergency Management. We have big meetings countywide on those. I'm usually part of those, and we decide what towns, what areas, what creek zones need to be evacuated. All areas can be more restrictive to that, meaning the city or myself and my district. I can't reduce the requirement, but I can increase it. I could say, I want to go further out from this creek. I want to go two more blocks in every direction. The city has that right, too, with their staff. If they think there's, you know, a detailed need in your area that the county maybe didn't cover. So those kind of things, we talk quite a bit about to find out, you know, what needs to happen in our area when those kind of predictions are happening. I already talked about emergency management. One of the new things, it's a new product for evacuation. It's called Genesis. It's coming across countywide. We're working with city staff. My admin captain has been here quite a bit, working with the city staff, talking about what zones need to be established within the city. He's also working outside of the city in our critical facilities, helping the city identify those. We've been working with the city with the CERT program, Community Emergency Response Training, and that's to train your citizens to be prepared and how to help us during major incidents. We have been working with the city on those classes. I know we just, one is finishing up in July, and there's another one planned in January that we're working with. Listos is emergency training for the Spanish-speaking population, and we hosted that at Fire Station 61. There's an upcoming Children Carp's project in October, November that's in the planning phase under that hat. And then there's an EOC earthquake drill scheduled for November, October 16th. That's with your city staff, some training for Emergency Operations Center related to an earthquake drill. That's coming up to make sure the city is prepared for those type of situations and how to work and operate in EOC. Fire Prevention Bureau. I'm going to pass this over to Mike. I want him to talk about what Fire Prevention Bureau does.
Thank you, Chief. So just to put it in perspective, so we have both the city of Carpenteria and the unincorporated area within our jurisdiction as well. I ran the statistics on it. We did about 160, almost 170 plan reviews within the city itself. So we're doing 10 to 15 a month, working with your staff, and our goal at the fire department level is we review it for what we have to do, and our goal is a 10-business-day turnaround. We don't want to try and stall these projects. We want to try and keep things moving, but again, our priority is, do they meet our access standards? Do they meet our water standards? And your staff is extremely supportive. We have it to the point where it's open communication. We can make phone calls. We're doing emails to try and continue this process and not slow things down. We also work well with your code enforcement personnel, where if they have something going on, they can call us. We'll show up. We will, a lot of times, it's good to have a different entity and a second person sometimes when you're going to talk to somebody, so we really work well, and we try and team up to provide that service for you guys, and you guys provide that for us as well. Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you. There's some training that our admin captain's working with city staff, that he is in the planning phase, and that's some EOC refresher training. We work, we assist in the Lifeguard Academy for the City of Carpenteria lifeguards. Our water rescue team, they enjoy working with that group because they know they're going to work together on the real incidents, so they're eager to work with your city lifeguard staff. They come out, they demonstrate what we can do so they can see when they get a call, what we're going to show up with, and what our people are capable of. There's a planning phase going on to provide CPR, AED, Automatic Diffusor, fire extinguisher, and first aid training to city staff. That's all in the works. That's one of the assignments of my administrative captain to make sure these kind of things are happening. And then here's the events that we collaborate on or that we work with within the city. Obviously, I mentioned Avocado Festival. We do create the Emergency Action Plan for that event. Of course, we don't want anything bad to happen, but if it does, we have a plan on what we're going to do. We staff the first aid booth. Mike and his staff staffs a fire prevention education booth, hand out materials, and educate the public on what they need to do for fire prevention. We help, we are part of the Independence Day and holiday parades, the July 4th fireworks signage and patrolling. Do you want to add anything on that, Mike?
It's coming up.
Since it's coming up, I'm going to pause there. I know that's probably, you want to hear what Mike has to say.
Yep, it's coming up. Does every year. So right now, we're in the process, we'll be getting the signage out. So we will post at beach accesses, Salt Marsh, some of our problematic areas. We have both in English and Spanish signs about fireworks are prohibited. That'll start, this week, we'll be getting that signage out, and then at the actual, for 4th of July, we'll be looking at the calendar. 4th of July is a Friday. Friday? I think it was a Friday? Thank you. So we'll be looking at potentially Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night. That's where we are with that one.
Memorial Day service at the cemetery. There's a national night out in August we're going to be part of. The City of Carp 60th birthday events are coming up in September, so I know my captain's involved in anything we can participate in that. We do assist for beach lifeguard staffing. It's only happened, I think, once or twice, but we let the city staff know if there's a need for our personnel to staff a lifeguard tower because there's a staffing issue, please call us. We'll coordinate if we have available staffing. Sometimes it could be right in the heat of summertime activities for wildland fires, and we may not have extra staff, but most of the time, if we're available, and my folks love doing it. They love interacting with the lifeguards. Anyways, they'll be there. Junior lifeguard competition, we do rescue standby for that. So in summary, we are all-risk services to the city of Carp, surrounding unincorporated areas. The city and the district closely interact and collaborate on a continual basis. Is there any questions for me before I pass it over to the Fire Safe Council?
Not a question, but just a quick comment. I really appreciate that you opened up the fire station for tours for some of us. In the past couple of months, it was really helpful to be able to see what it looks like and where you guys do your work, so thank you for that outreach to us on council.
I'm just mostly a little curious, and it's probably just because it seems like such a massive undertaking, is how the mutual aid is activated in California? Just understanding that as we go into these, like, really high fire seasons, and knowing, you know, I'll hear all the time, like, oh, we've got carp fires down in Malibu. They're all the way up in Healdsburg, you know, and just, like, what does that look like? How do you manage that?
Okay, I'll try to make it quick. First, I want to talk about our fire stations for staff and the public. Our firefighters love families coming by. They love that. So please, please, if you have kids that want to come by, see the fire station and the engines, they eat it up. So your public's always welcome. You see the guys and gals out and about, just stop by, please. That master mutual aid program. So it starts with, if your local jurisdiction is overwhelmed and you need help, we reach out what is called our operational area. That's usually the resources within your county. We're a little different here because we're right up against Ventura County, so we can reach out to Ventura County and Ventura City pretty quickly because we're so close versus, like, trying to reach out the Santa Maria Fire. But the general rule is, if I'm over, if I need more help, I go out to what is called my operational area. There's coordinators in this area on duty all the time, called duty officers. You call them and say, I need 10 more fire engines, and they will get it rolling while you're managing your big incident. Now, if the op area cannot handle it, because you need 50 engines, then they go to what is called Region 1. California is divided into six different regions. We're in Region 1, San Luis County, I believe, all the way down to San Diego, maybe Orange, somewhere in there it stops. So they try to stay within regions before they cross region. So now Region 1 will get a call, and there's a Region 1 coordinator down in LA, and they'll say, say, Santa Barbara County needs 15 more fire engines, and they now find 15 fire engines, try to get the ones that are as close to us as possible. If the region's overwhelmed, which can happen in the summertime with massive fires all over the place, then they go to the state and they do a state coordination, and then if the state gets overwhelmed, they can go to the feds, and the feds can now reach the other states and bring, we can get the whole US here if we needed to in these massive fires. And you hear that you get them coming, actually you hear other countries coming, New Zealand, Australian firefighters, Canadian firefighters will show up here. Right now, this country has a bunch of US firefighters up in Canada, helping out with Canada, they're burning right now, so it just kind of branches out as needed and then pulls in. And we all have to do it to help each other because things get big fast for the big wildland fires. Does that answer your question?
I mean, it answers my question, and it makes me feel almost emotional, really, I mean, just to hear the way that you approach this calling and your jobs, and it's, I want to say thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, one last caveat is all agencies have a minimum drawdown level that we can go help because we still have to protect our area. Calls are still going to happen, the daily calls, the medicals, the structural fires, vehicle accidents, so we have only a certain amount we can do. And then we're tapped out because we have to still, we never jeopardize protecting our own area, and that goes across the board everywhere.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, I have a question. I really appreciate this presentation because I think there's still a misconception that the fire department is somehow under the city of Carpinteria, when in reality, we work and we partner with you all and we collaborate. And during the visit that I had with Councilmember Solosana or Vice Mayor, there were some really interesting statistics that I thought, that I felt like were really notable. I don't quite recall the number of emergencies or calls, but I'm wondering if you, if either of you could share some of those notable statistics in terms of the city of Carpinteria, maybe within the last year?
Well, I can't break it down just by the city, I just know from my district, it's about 2,300 calls a year, and every year it climbs in the hundreds because population grows. I mean, actually, our population has been pretty stable, to tell you the truth. But it's about 2,300 calls, and I'd say probably the mid 70s, close to 80% of those are medical emergencies. So the key with that is we have fire stations strategically placed, not just us, the whole fire service world, so we can get to your house within five minutes of U-911. And the reason for that is in six, seven minutes, it's called flashover of your home, where it's not survivable, six minutes, you're brain dead from no oxygen if you're unconscious. So we want to get there within five minutes to stop one of those two things from happening. So because we're so strategically located, and we put paramedics on our engines for that reason, we can get there really fast, and the ambulance sometimes may be a few minutes behind us, they do a great job of getting there, but that two minutes could be critical. So we respond to all medicals with our paramedics, ambulance comes with their units, and so that's how we respond in our area.
Mayor, if I could, while they get ready for that next presentation, I just really want to say it's been wonderful working with the chief and the fire marshal and the fire admin captain that they've referenced over and over. Dave Baker has just been incredible to work with, he's helped us with our, as I mentioned, EOC training, CERT training, and even this weekend when there was the fallen tree on Franklin Creek Trail, it was Dave Baker that I called, and he had me in touch with Mark Wilkinson from the Santa Barbara Trails Council, and they were on it within minutes, it was Dave's day off, and that's just the kind of folks that they are, they're always there to help, and it's just, you know, really been a pleasure working with the fire department. Also, let you know later on in my CM report, we're going to have two security guards at the beach for 4th of July this year, which you guys will be happy to know, and so, but anyhow, it's been, it's been great working with you guys.
All right. Well, hello, my name is Kate Furlong, I am the Community Resilience Lead with the Santa Barbara County Fire Safe Council. So we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, we help provide kind of a connection between the communities and the fire agencies, as well as the other emergency agencies throughout Santa Barbara County. Our mission is to provide wildfire safety through education and action. We really like to empower our residents because when we have these massive wildfires, it really takes a village, so we want to try to make sure that we're helping our residents as well as our first responders be able to do their jobs. We are the only fire safe council in Santa Barbara County, which makes us different from many other counties throughout the state of California. This helps us be able to accommodate more work, it helps us reduce on competition, and really helps us align with the fire departments a lot easier. So we began in 1997, and we were all volunteer board, and they were running strong like that for almost two decades. We were managing about three grants of around $300,000 worth, then there was no program, it was just to support the fire agencies. And now, we have eight full-time staff members, two part-time staff, and two seasonal interns, the need is growing and so is our staff. We now manage 10 grants and over $10 million in funding, we have 11 different programs and seven projects that are ongoing. So some of our different programs are, one of our favorite ones is Prescribed or Bivry, it's super adorable, and everyone loves to see the sheep on the hills. This helps us remove a lot of the fine flashy fuels that help carry fires really quickly along our front countries. This is a low-impact way to be able to do this mitigation. We use a climate investment fund to be able to sponsor this, so we're going green with this project, so our four-legged firefighters are usually out there, you'll see them more in the San Marcos foothills kind of areas, that's where we have most of our fire history when it comes to these flashy fuels. So we focus and target that area there to be able to protect the infrastructure. We conduct home evaluations, so all of our fire agencies also offer these, this is where we go around the homes, and we help provide information about how to conduct your defensible space, how to improve that, point out any hazardous species that you might have next to your home, and we also focus on the structure itself. So there's been a lot of new studies that have shown, and we've seen a lot of the new learnings from the recent fires in LA, so we're trying to provide people with tips and tricks that they can do. Some of them are very inexpensive to be able to increase the survivability of your home, particularly during a wind-driven wildfire. 60 to 90% of homes that are damaged or lost are caused from ember intrusion, so a little bit of education can go a long way when it comes to structural safety. This is also free, it's a free of cost for everyone, we provide a written report as well. We had some, a huge uptick of interest in this program after the Palisades fire, so our one assessor was booked up three months in advance, so if you are interested in booking one, just be patient, please, we only have one. I keep saying I need to clone him, and I will make that happen eventually. So another one of our programs is, this is my bread and butter, this is the Firewise USA program. It's run by the National Fire Protection Association, so it is a nationwide program. California has the highest concentration of Firewise communities, we have over 1,000 in the state. When we started, when I started, there was 11 Firewise communities in Santa Barbara County, and now there are 41, and there are 12 more that are in process, so it's growing in popularity. Our neighbors are really trying to look to see how they can work together to reduce their risk, so this is a really great opportunity for us to provide them with a framework and the education, so they understand what their risks are, and I provide them with a strategic plan for three years of how they're going to gradually move that needle to become more resilient by working together. Our community chipping program is a very popular one, and we've had the most participation this year out of all of them. This is a three-year grant, so we are looking to renew this once CalFire releases more funding. But we were focusing primarily on the South County, but now we've expanded all the way through the North County for this program. We actually helped support the Carp Summerland Chipping Program this year as well with some funds. So this is a way for homeowners to conduct their own defensible space, stack their material outside, and then we haul it off, so it's significantly more affordable and accessible. Instead of having to haul away your materials yourself, we come to you and remove it, so you can do the work after we've provided you with the guidance, and then we haul it all away for free. So this is some of our impacts from last year, and this has doubled already this year. So we removed 1,200 tons of vegetation through our chipping programs, grazed over 700 acres of land with our sheep. We've did 179 home evaluations, I'm pretty sure Gustavo did that in January this year with how many that were being asked and requested. We've helped thousands of individuals, expanded more on our Firewise communities, and we also helped with defensible space assistance, so we have other service that we provide as well for those who can't conduct the work themselves if they're physically or financially unable to do so, we help provide them with support. So Firewise USA is growing in Carpinteria, there is one current community, there's actually the Mobile Home Park just across the freeway from us, they are our first Firewise community in Carpinteria. This is a free involuntary program, it's a great framework for neighbors to work together, so instead of making assumptions, we really understand what needs to be done. There's no regulation enforcement, though we do bring the fire department with us when we're doing the risk assessment, so we make sure that the messaging is consistent, we're following their recommendations, and then they're also aware of what the needs are of those neighbors. They already are very aware of it, but then there's another opportunity for us to connect. This helps increase our knowledge, strengthen these bonds. I like to say it's reclaiming the idea of community, because many of us don't even know our neighbors, and when it comes to a big event, knowing your neighbors will make you safer, reduces the conflict, you can become an asset instead of a liability for one another. It helps with our grant appeal, because we can say, we know exactly this amount of people are going to work with us well, and we can provide them this service because this is what they've requested help with. So it helps us be able to reduce the assumptions and make direct support, but it also helps save on your homeowner's insurance for your fire. Many of us have been dropped throughout the county of Santa Barbara, there is 72,000 State Farm policies that were dropped last year for fire, so being part of this program, the insurance companies really like it because you're protecting their asset, you're reducing your risk, reducing the need to call them, they like that. The California Fair Plan, a lot of people have been pushed to using that program now, and they provide the largest discount if you are within a Firewise community. So it's not just saying, you know, we know what our risk is, we're actually working to reduce it together, and they like to provide a discount. And so there's more and more insurance agents that are providing these discounts, and the state commissioner is also pushing more for more companies to recognize this program. So as I mentioned earlier, there are 41 Firewise communities in Santa Barbara County, there's one in Carpinteria, there's one in Summer, actually, no, there are two now in Summerland, there was one that just got awarded. And we have a couple more that are also in process. I'm trying to create a whole quilt of communities, so we have more connection and more continuity across the front country, so they're safer, since they have the highest risk when it comes to impact from wildfires. We also host focus groups, we've hosted several within Carpinteria, this is a way for us to reach out, we particularly work with the monolingual Spanish-speaking community, it's a group that hasn't really been covered when it comes to working with a lot of the emergency planning and management, when it comes to some of the grassroots levels, so we're really trying to elevate those voices and bring them into the conversation. We're expanding more of this program, we are building a framework for how to provide more focus groups, so we can connect more people with resources, have them practice and have them plan together with their neighbors and with their families, so we can help reduce the conflicts when there is a mass evacuation event. So our fundamental questions and foundational questions are asking what our communities need, how do we, how can we engage with them better when it comes to wildfire mitigation? A lot of people are renters, a lot of people who are low-income are renters, so they are really limited when it comes to the work they can do on their own home, so it really is about providing education and that community connection. Working on community-based solutions, working with local organizations and agencies, places where people already go, so we're not asking people to go out of their way to meet us, we meet them where they are. We've been working with a lot of churches in the area, Catholic churches in particular, to be able to connect with monolingual Spanish-speaking communities and provide them with this information. We understand that not all of us have a ton of time to be doing this kind of preparation, it is a privilege to be prepared for a lot of people, so we're trying to make sure that we can integrate our information into their regular scheduled activities, so it makes it kind of second nature. We do this effort by partnering with the churches and healthcare organizations as well, and we also try to make sure that we know who they're working with, because there's a lot of resources out there, there are so many nonprofits in Santa Barbara County, it is insane, and there's so many resources, but a lot of these resources don't connect with one another. So when we can kind of strengthen these bonds between these different organizations, we can elevate each other's work and be able to have a greater impact. So that kind of wraps it up, a quick summary for our organization. If you're interested in learning more about Firewise, I'm happy to do a presentation for community members. I brought some resources about home hardening, defensible space, and Firewise program for the council to review, if you'd be interested in that, and if you have any questions, I'm here.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions?
Sure. It sounds like the home evaluations are pretty booked, like you said, a couple of months in advance, but when people do want to do that, would they go through the email, the website, how best can they do that?
Yeah, so you can register on our website, sbfiresafecouncil.org, under Programs, we have home evaluations, you just click on that. We have a new calendar scheduling program, so we can kind of optimize the use of our drive time. We have hired two new assessors, so we will be tripling our efforts now, and things have kind of slowed down a bit, we've caught up with this huge amount of requests that we're in. It rained twice, so a lot of people forgot that fire is a risk still, so that kind of freed up some space as well, but those are still very much available, and we'll work together to try to schedule something that works best for your time.
And then in terms of the Firewise communities, it sounds like there's just one certified community, are there any barriers to people opting into the program? Is it something where maybe we can help disseminate information for communities to want to get that certification?
Yeah, so we have a lot of interests that are, that's still in the area, and we have a lot that are in process. We've kind of expanded the boundaries of some, so instead of having a lot of smaller communities, we're trying to encourage to have a little larger ones. Once the community is set and is recognized, it's really difficult to expand those boundaries, so we want to kind of encourage people to make a little bit more friends with people next street over, just kind of stretch that boundary a little bit. There's a lot of interest in it, whenever there's another fire, it's a big windy day, then we have a huge uptick in interest as well. I do have, there are three neighborhoods that are interested that I'm working with in the area as well, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
And that was just last question, so you mentioned you did a couple of focus groups in Carpinteria, what was some of the information that you got from those in terms of maybe what Carpinteria residents are most concerned about with the Firewise programming?
Yeah, so a lot of them actually were interested on just fire extinguisher training, that was a huge interest, so then, once we learned that from the focus groups, we came back and we provided training for this group, particularly seniors. One notable one, there was an 83-year-old woman who lived alone, first time ever using a fire extinguisher, she said she felt so much safer living alone now because she has that resource, so that really warmed our hearts. But yeah, just learning how to evacuate, how to get notices. A lot of people aren't sure how to use the Ready SBC system, so we also brought forms to be able to help them register as well, and we can put in the information. There's a lot of people where, you know, they're not, they prefer pictorial, so if we're working with like McSteco communities, having the language in a written term isn't as helpful, so that makes it really difficult, so really trying to focus on making these connections. So a lot of people didn't know where to go during an emergency, and having to provide that information of, it depends on where the emergency is and where the threat is coming from, and that's why it's so important to be signed up for these notices, because then you can get the direction, so you're not putting yourself directly in the line of danger. Some people will try to say, okay, we're definitely just going to go to the school, but you have no idea if the school is going to be impacted, so we want to make sure that we're waiting for Red Cross to have a shelter set up, or make sure that you're out of the area. So providing education like that was the primary, just trying to understand, where do I go? And so that reeducation was very valuable.
That's great, thank you, and thank you so much for doing all that outreach in Carpinteria.
Of course, of course, well, thank you so much for having us.
Thank you, Kate, I appreciate it, and I appreciate learning more about the Fire Safe Council.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. I do not have any speaker slips, do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have no speakers on Zoom.
Great, thank you, I'll go ahead and officially close public comment, bring it back to the council for any final questions. Nope, saying then, okay. We will go ahead and move on to the next item on our agenda, which is Public Information Reports and Announcements, and we will hear a report from our first district supervisor's office, Supervisor Royley.
Council, Steph, happy to be here. Just a quick report today, last week, the four supervisors approved the 1.69 billion budget, huge budget, right? Just a couple takeaways from that, we reallocated cannabis tax funds, not a lot of money's coming from it, so we just have to make cuts. So we did that, one great thing is that we did is we allocated $240,000 for their PIS for the Immigration Legal Defense Center, that's something we're hoping to provide more money for six months, we're hoping to add another one, so that's a great one. We tried to get a community resource deputy for Carpinteria, unfortunately, we were not able to fund that, hopefully, I'm still working on it, there's still an opportunity somewhere, so crossing my fingers. And, great news, the SB Office of Arts gave two grants for $5,000 for the Accazal Theater and the Skate Park Foundation, great, more money for the community. So other than that... So other than that, just a brief update. Any questions about, you have any questions for me? If not, I'm done. Thank you.
Oh, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. I do not have any speaker slips. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have no raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, I'll go ahead and officially close public comment, and I will actually go back to Agenda Item Number Two. And I'm realizing I did not receive a motion on behalf of the council. So if I can have a motion for Agenda Item Number Two.
Sure, I move to receive and file the report presentation by the Carpinteria of Summerland Fire Protection District and the Santa Barbara County Fire Safety Council.
A second.
Perfect. We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. The next item on our agenda is the City Manager's Report.
Yes, Mayor, Council, and community members. The City Manager Report, as always, I encourage folks to open that up and read it in detail. I'm just going to really sort of skim over some of the items, and I don't always cover all of them, of course, open to answer any questions about any of the items on here and/or agendize it for a future meeting if there's greater interest. I already talked about Fourth of July, but just to restate that again, the city will have some security out at each of the beach ends, and they'll be there at four o'clock just educating people, letting people know about, you know, our rules here in the city and not allowing fireworks on the beach. And so be very friendly out there, just introducing themselves and letting people know. And then, of course, for anybody who wouldn't be following the rules, they have the ability to, you know, take pictures, video, call, and call sheriffs and able to cite folks for not following those rules. So that's a big change from last year. That'll help prevent any of the things that you sometimes have when we're relying on sheriffs or fire, and they get called out for different things. And so we'll have focus people there throughout the night. And I should mention that will be not only Friday, but because it's a Fourth of July weekend, and we expect people will be there throughout the weekend. It'll be Friday and Saturday. That was not part of the City Manager Report, but just wanted to add that. And I'll turn it over briefly to Assistant City Manager Ryan Kents to give us a city employee update.
Thank you, City Manager Michael Ramirez. Yes, just real quick, a couple updates for the council and the public. So our Environmental Program Manager full-time position did close. We've received a lot of applications, and we're currently conducting screening to bring them in for a first round of interviews. And then our Public Works Manager, we did complete all of the interviews, and we are about to make a decision to bring that person on, so that position is pending selection. Then we also have our Community Engagement Library Specialist. This is a full-time position. We did get a lot of interest for this one as well. We are currently conducting that screening to perform the first interview. And then we have the Aquatics Program Coordinator, also a full-time position, a lot of interest for that as well. And we are currently conducting the screening for that one as well, for the in-person interview. And then finally, the Community Garden Coordinator is a part-time position. It is open until filled, so just so the public knows. We are conducting a screening right now for the first round of applications that we did get. And, you know, if we do have a successful candidate out of that round, we'll move forward. But if we don't, we'll continue to accept applications. And that's it, and available for any questions.
Questions? No? Okay.
So before I turn it over to our Community Development Director Nick Bobroff to cover some things, I want to just highlight a few of our programs happening within our Parks Recreation and Community Services Department. An AgeWell Lecture Series, again, AgeWell is our senior services programs, but our AgeWell Lecture Series is going to do a talk on on-demand transit in Carpinteria. So MTD will be there on June 26th from 1:00 to 2:15, talking to people about the wave. And the session is designed to provide community members with important details about the service, including how to use it and what to expect. Also, the Summer Reading Program at Carpinteria Library is beginning. The theme is Take Me to Your Reader. And this runs from June 13th. It's already started through August 2nd. And again, centered around the theme of space exploration, and the program invites community members of all ages to embark on a literacy journey through the solar system. Some of the Summer Reading Program events include Family Movie Night on June 20th, which is past, at 5:30. I hope it was great. There's also Tailwise Science Heroes Adventure of the Missing Color. That's June 27th at 3:00 p.m. in the Library Community Room. And then Moxie Stomp Rockets. Stop by anytime for science fun, and this will be on July 11th at 2:00 p.m. at the Veterans Hall Courtyard. Some other library programs coming up is a knitting workshop, Knit with Pride. That's on June 25th at 1:00 p.m. in the Library Community Room. Join the knitting group as they do creative needlework project in celebration of Pride Month. Basic ESL Summer Classes are on Saturdays from June 21st to August 9th at 9:30 a.m. in the Library Community Room. And also Beach Bingo and World Safest Bingo is Thursdays from July 3rd to August 28th at 6:00 p.m. I'm happy to answer any questions about that. If not, I'll turn it over to Nick Bobroff to do some updates from his end. Wonderful, I'll turn it over to Nick.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening again, Mayor Alarcon. And council members, have just a couple of quick updates for you here this evening. First off, I wanted to let you know that the city's proposed Franklin Creek Trail Project is scheduled for Planning Commission Review on Monday, July 7th. This project would provide an improved multi-use trail along Franklin Creek from Carpinteria Avenue down to Seventh Street. This is a highly-used trail there, impromptu trail along the flood control channel, and so this would make that a safer, more accessible pathway with lighting, landscaping, and improved fencing there to make it a safer experience for all users. So again, that's Monday, July 7th at the Planning Commission, and the staff report for that item should be published the first week of July. We're also in the midst of the public review period for the draft update to the city's Coastal Landees Plan and General Plan. That was released for a 60-day period starting on June 10th, and we'll be holding a public workshop to go over the general plan and take public feedback on Tuesday, July 8th at 6:00 p.m. in the Carpinteria Library. And so that's an opportunity for folks to come out, learn more about the general plan update, ask questions, provide input, and so on and so forth. We have a project information page on the city website under the Community Development Department's page, and if folks are interested in finding out more, they can email gpupdate@carpenteriasca.gov to get on the interested parties list for that project. And then finally, just a reminder that on July 1, our multifamily residential smoking ban will take effect. This is a prohibition on smoking in multifamily residential properties, including both individual units and common areas. We've been making an effort here over the last six months to get the word out about this, having contact with some of the individual property managers or HOAs, putting it in the Coastal View News, putting it out to social media, getting some cooperation from local press to get coverage to this, really trying to get word out there that this takes effect next week. We've also got FAQs on our city website for both property managers and HOAs and residents about what the ordinance requires and how it may affect them. And that wraps up my items unless you have any questions for me.
One real quick one. On our report, we talk about Linden Avenue Improvement Project, Carpinteria Avenue, Linden Avenue Overcrossing. Could you tell me a little bit about that?
Councilmember Namora, that would be under John Lawson's Public Works team. But essentially, what happened there is there's some bids that went out, and they opened the bids and had to process those for, you know, the bids themselves and then the other criteria for selecting those folks to do the work. And so we look forward after those people have been selected to bring that back and notify the council of who was selected to do the work. I'll also mention a completely unrelated fact that Nick was climbing Mount Whitney this weekend. We're happy to have him back at regular elevation, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. We have Rogelio Delgado. Welcome.
Thank you, Rogelio Delgado, Carpinteria resident. I live on Baylor Avenue, on those, on Casillas Village condos. And I've been, there's 250 condominiums there. And I've been asking people, Casillas Village is 65% renters and 35% owners. I've been asking people, I have been there for, I think, half a century. A lot of them do not, mainly renters, do not know about this, about the law, non-smoking, starting July 1st. So property owners get the information, I got it, but not the tenants. So it's up to the property owner, notify them, that they have to follow the law. Basically, after 5:00 p.m., all rules are broken. Double parking on alleys, drinking. They say rules are to be broken. So how can this be avoided? Or what are the consequences of not following through? It's an excellent law to protect people from direct smoke or second-hand smoke. This can be fatal. Actually, it was fatal to my dad not too long ago. So last year, I applauded this law. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have no raised hands.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council. So that was public comment for the City Manager's Report. I have your public comment slips for the next item. Thank you. So I'll go ahead and close public comment. Thank you for your report. Any other questions from council before we move on? No? Okay. The next item is the City Manager's Report. No, I'm sorry, the public comment on matters not on the agenda. And the first speaker slip I have is Mike Wondolowski.
I'm Mike Wondolowski, speaking for Carpinteria Valley Association, and I'm actually going to be commenting on the Fourth of July fireworks that the City Manager squeezed into his report at the end after all. As most of you know, in past years, we had serious problems with fireworks. And I was here last year and the year before talking about fireworks on the beach at the end of Linden Avenue and the lack of city prevention and enforcement and response, even though we knew exactly when and where they were going to happen. So back in May, I contacted City Manager, and he was kind enough to set up a meeting with me and with Chief Bridingham to discuss the plans for this year. And I was really excited to, it was a very positive conversation. I was really excited about his plans to have some private security dedicated to specifically that issue of fireworks on the beach in a couple of different places so that they would not need to be called away to a higher priority issue. It is their high priority issue. And frankly, I just look forward to seeing how that goes. I am optimistic, but also a little bit cynical that it can be that easy. Maybe it is, and maybe Mr. Ramirez got a little creative and is going to solve our problem for us this year. So it's also very positive that we're doing both Friday and Saturday nights, which is a very, very smart way to anticipate the likely scenarios. So I look forward to seeing how this works. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Alan Braithwaite.
Yes.
Welcome.
I'm shaking on my feet here. I am Alan Braithwaite. Thanks for having me. I wanted to make a couple comments, particularly for Ms. Solozano, about the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. It's a pledge that we assert to reflect our deep convictions to the quality of life we have enjoyed throughout our history. Ours is a history fraught with intrigues and injustices, along with stunning privileges and excellences such as no other nation on earth has ever enjoyed. Recent events demonstrate such a mix of these. Current circumstances have included several stunning privileges that peaceful protesters have availed themselves of, such as throwing not-so-peaceful Molotov cocktails at law enforcement agencies, throwing peaceful broken concrete blocks at cars passing beneath local bridges, peaceful protesters robbing Los Angeles stores, and all of this in the name of 20 million immigrants who have never received an American government invitation to join us in our injustices, intrigues, and excellences. Oh, and by the way, can you imagine a burning Molotov cocktail igniting in your face? Can you imagine that? So I say to deny the very freedom, Ms. Solozano, that you enjoy today by failing to understand the disparate pains of an aging nation's efforts to always grow and develop, I think demonstrates a troubling version of maturity, a troubling version in someone elected to make policy for 15,000 of the rest of us. I think that's important. Perhaps you might wish to reconsider a larger view of the complexity of our immigration, broken immigration system, to review who is actually responsible for recent violence. To seek a reconciliation and engage your pledge, your pledge, with a deeper insight born of a keener view, perhaps then those of us who did not vote for you would be willing to reconsider their vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Delsey Feller.
Hi, good evening. My name's Delsey Feller, and I am the Carpinteria Valley Republican Club President. But it is not my forte to speak, so I'm really not good at this. But I've been encouraged by many phone calls and many conversations of people that, friends that have been upset. I am a proud patriot, and I have many friends that I've been talking to that are, have concerns about our Vice Mayor, Monica, who chose to sit as tonight at this meeting and not during our Pledge of Allegiance. She claims that it was not out of disrespect, but make no mistake, our children, my grandchildren, our grandchildren are watching. She is a PTA member and a community leader. Her job is to inspire civic engagement, not disdain, oh, there's an error, not disdain for our country. If she generally wanted to make a statement, she should have stood up and said louder than anyone indivisible with liberty and justice for all. That would have honored both the cause and the country. And if she's frustrated with federal action, then she should run for Congress or call the congressman she's aligned with to finally pass a single piece of meaningful legislation. He's had five terms to do it. This city deserves solutions, not symbolic protests. Public service should never be used as a stage for Marcus messaging disguised as virtue. I hope you take the time to reflect on the leadership, what leadership looks like. I still believe people can rise to the responsibility of the office they hold. I generally hope you choose to be the kind of leader going forward for the sake of our kids, my grandkids, our grandkids, our country, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Delsey. Our next speaker is Teresa Alvarez, followed by Jessica Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name's Teresa Alvarez, and I'm the Executive Director of the Carpinteria Children's Project. And I'm here with staff and our friends from the Carpinteria Immigrant Rights Coalition. Our mission at the Carpinteria Children's Project is to prepare children for school and help them and their families thrive. And I apologize if I get emotional. However, we recognize that children can't be ready to learn if they're living in fear. We work closely with families every day, and what we're seeing, what our staff and teachers are hearing is fear, stress, and uncertainty that is taking a real toll on children's emotional well-being. This kind of toxic stress affects brain development, behavior, and learning. It's not just a family issue, it's a community issue, and it's a child development issue. We want to share a few stories from local families that we shared with us this weekend at our event, Manos Unidas, an immigration clinic we held. One mom said, "I can't sleep just thinking about what might happen to my children, leaving for work and not coming back to them and asking me if I'm going to come back home." Others shared, "As a first-generation daughter of immigrants, what is happening in our country is truly devastating. Growing up, my parents taught me the value of hard work and how you can build something out of nothing. I truly feel blessed by all the beautiful resources that this community has offered me. However, what is happening now is real and is happening in real time." I ask that you ask yourselves, if separating families is humane. Carpinteria has always been a safe and uplifting community. Please don't keep quiet now when we need you all the most. These days have been very difficult because we've been living in fear that we could be taken out of the country and that our children would be left behind here and that we have to leave everything we've built. I hope things get better for everyone because we are good people. We work honestly, and we do everything according to the law. Out of all the letters we received, the majority mentioned the impact on their children. I'm here tonight to urge you to take a stand in solidarity with the families in our community who are being impacted by immigration raids and enforcement actions. When parents are afraid to drop off their children, go to work, or even access basic services, the ripple effects reach far beyond any one household. We believe Carpinteria can be a place where all families feel safe and supported, where children can grow up without the weight of fear on their shoulders, excuse me. I respectfully ask the council to consider taking a public stand and send a clear message. Carpinteria stands for compassion, inclusion, and the well-being of all its residents. Thank you. These letters will be sent to the council.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Jessica Ramirez, and I serve as the Director of Family Services at Carpinteria Children's Project. I'm here alongside Teresa and our partners to share a reflection about the event we hosted this past weekend, a few powerful stories, and also a call to action. This event was organized to create a safe and welcoming space for families to access critical resources during these deeply assending times. Families were able to receive free legal consultations, letter notarizations, and information from trusted community partners, including the 805 Undocu Fund, the Carpinteria Community Library, Legal Aid of Santa Barbara, the Carpinteria Immigrant Rights Coalition, the Mexican consulate, among others. While many families came, others stayed home, afraid to leave their houses. Some attendees shared that they were gathering resources on behalf of their family members. Last week, as we helped a mother complete a caregiver form, she asked me, "Do you think I need one for my one-and-a-half-year-old? I'm still breastfeeding. Would they let me take her if I'm detained?" Here are a few more stories. Hello. I've lived in Carpinteria for past 30 years. Until today, I have lived without fear because it's a very safe community. But with what's happening, I'm very afraid for my children. They're young, and I'm their breadwinner. Another mom shared, "I'm very concerned about all of these raids. I would like the City of Carpinteria to support us, to let us know when these things are happening so that we can all be aware and take care of each other. We are all family." And I'm also worried about Medi-Cal, about cutting funding or reporting privacy to the immigration agency. Please, City of Carpinteria, help us. We want to be heard. Please, thank you very much. Our community is afraid, clearly. In this time of fear and uncertainty, we ask for your leadership and solidarity. To rise with us, and here are a few meaningful ways that the city can support our immigrant community. Pass a resolution affirming that the city's commitment to diversity, inclusion, and the protection of all residents regardless of immigration status. Use public statements to condemn fear-based enforcement tactics and express solidarity with immigrant communities, especially in response to the masked agents and actions that deny individuals due process. Limit cooperation between local law enforcement and federal immigration agencies. Do not honor ICE detainers without a judicial warrant. And ensure that immigration status is not questioned during city services or policing. Provide funding to nonprofit organizations that offer legal aid, mental health, know-your-rights trainings, and emergency assistance. Our community needs your voice and action now more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Susan Melhew?
Thank you, council, mayor, and staff. As our human population continues to grow here, we're ignoring the original inhabitants. Yesterday, a badly injured harbor seal took refuge with the members of his colony in the rookery. At approximately 2:00 PM, people entered the rookery and frightened all seals out, including the seal which greatly needed rest. Beach walkers did not see the small, ineffective sign posted. This is not the sign that the Harbor Seal Advisory Committee agreed to. That's here. This sign is small, insignificant, and free, and it mentions nothing about harbor seals or the Marine Mammal Protection Act. The city requested the Harbor Seal Advisory Committee to make recommendations to improve the seal habitat and decrease harassment. We must try to enact those recommendations that the committee deemed, after considerable and in-depth study, to have the best chances to improve the seals' welfare. So Plan A was to extend the existing closure of the 1,500 feet of our Harbor Seal Rookery for a trial period to dogs and people. That will take time and effort, but staff was instructed to research costs, and we already have the support of the community. Plan B is to update the Carpinteria Municipal Code to reflect the Marine Mammal Protection Act, to include Amendment 1964, which requires taking science-based research into account in assessing marine mammal populations. Plan C is a part-time code enforcement or park ranger to dissuade those who come into the beach. That seal stood a very good chance of getting rescued by Channel Island Marine and Wildlife Institute. I had made all the arrangements. I had discussed it with my colleagues at SIMWE. And if the Executive Director had chosen to, that seal was gone. It may not survive. So I ask that you please direct Public Works to put up the sign that the Harbor Seal Advisory Committee selected.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Rogelio Delgado.
Rogelio Delgado, Carpinteria resident. I know most of the Hispanic people in Carpinteria, both citizens and not. And this public comment is in behalf of them. We think of Venezuela, Cuba, as countries ruled by dictators. We can now add the United States. Organizations, unions, a lot of people now regret voting for Trump. It's too late. The damage has been done. Even US citizens, US citizens, as of today, they're at risk, both abroad and at home. By attacking Iraq without congressional approval, this has put everyone at risk. Now, talking about migrants, they have a rough life, whether in school or in the fields. There's bullying, discrimination, low wages, health problems. Those strawberries fields that you see on your way to Oxnard represent families who came to the States looking for a better life, not in education, but in the fields. We all have a relative, a friend, who is a migrant. I'm a migrant myself. I came to the States when I was 14 and became a US citizen in 1989. My father was a guest worker in the 60s. Nothing was given to us. We had to study hard, work hard to have a better life. Now, I have to carry my passport because me saying I'm an American citizen is not good enough. To migrants, liberty and justice, and justice is not for all. When you see ICE agents running through fields in pursuit of families, arresting people, waiting for the bus without a deportation order, showing up at courts, hospitals, Home Depot, Walmart, parking spots, this is done in the whole of the US. Trump passed a quarter, 3,000 people arrested per day. Trump talked about invading Greenland, Canada, but ended up invading California with the National Guard and Marines. The US is a nation of immigrants. The economy is largely based on migrants, with a migrant abuse and mistreatment. I wonder about the California Values Act. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Fred Shaw.
Good evening, council, staff. First off, on behalf of HopeNet, I am just here to remind you all about our 988 number, which anybody who is in stress, having difficulty with whatever is going on in their life, there is help. That's an emergency number you can call to get that help. Secondly, I would like to remind you that with Rods and Roses coming up this weekend, that we will have a booth there during the Rods and Roses Festival. And it's not on my thing, but if I could just take another minute to say something about a different subject completely, and that is pledging allegiance to the flag. We pledge allegiance to the flag as a symbol of ideals, not as a piece of cloth itself. Our Constitution sets out those ideals. It has several amendments that have been added over many years to clarify those various ideals, truth, justice, that sort of thing. First among those is the right to free speech. That's the right to have your own opinion and publicly state that opinion. Those rights are inalienable, well, at least for now, given the capriciousness of our current administration. We hope that they will continue to be our rights. I believe Vice Mayor Solerzano, when she spoke at the dais, was merely expressing her own opinion, how she felt which as an American citizen is her right in following our Constitution. So I commend her for doing that. And it's embarrassing to me that she would be taken to task for using one of the rights that our Constitution guarantees. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I do not have any other speaker slips. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have one raised hand. Go ahead, Lorraine.
Hello, Mayor and City Council staff. This is Lorraine McIntyre, and I just want to say I applaud Monica Solerzano for her stance taken on refraining from standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. We need more leaders like Monica, who are in a position of influence and who aren't afraid to speak up. The Pledge of Allegiance stands for qualities that our current White House is making a mockery of. So Monica, you will always have my respect for daring to be brave in the face of criticism. You are brave. You are an inspiration. You're demonstrating true patriotism, and I hope you follow your heart and that you don't sink to the pressure of status quo, because it's so mediocre these days. And we need brave people like you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Lorraine. Is, do we have any other raised hands?
We have no more raised hands.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Bring it back to the council if there's anything you'd like to comment on or follow up on.
Would it be possible if staff can look into the resolution that Teresa Alvarez from Carpinteria Children's Project mentioned? I think she provided some language for it, but I'm sure that she can give more if needed.
I would like to look into that also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Solerzano, council member. I did want to add in some additional context to that request since it was brought up. I do want to remind you all that the council has acted in some way on this. So as you all know, and I think it was referenced, there is the Senate Bill 54, which is the California Values Act. And back in March, your council did consider and pass a resolution, you know, pledging to continue compliance with the California Values Act, which in general states that it prohibits or prevents state and local law enforcement agencies from using their resources on behalf of federal immigration enforcement agencies. So that is something, the city council has already taken that action and passed that resolution. We also recently, let me see if I can get the date on this, provided in, back in April, city staff did provide some guidance to city staff to have on hand in all city buildings, which sets forth the legal requirements and their rights if federal agents were to try to enter or get information from city employees or from city buildings. And so we do want to let you know that city staff does have that resource on hand. And then at, I believe, in March and earlier, we did hear from Chief Brittingham that, you know, the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Office, which is who we receive our law enforcement services from, they generally do not. They comply also with the SB 54, with the California Values Act. They do not ask for immigration status during any of their routine, normal operations, and it's not their practice to retain that information as well.
Thank you for that context. And then, but that won't preclude potential resolution language from coming forward?
Correct. Correct. That's up to your council. If you want, I just wanted to remind the council that we have taken some action in this spot and remind the community as well. And is it still your request to have information back about, in line with the resolution that was requested by CCP?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Yes, I just want to ensure there's consensus with everyone. Yes? Yes? Okay, great. Okay. The next item on our agenda is a consent calendar, and I will go ahead and open up public comment for the consent calendar. I do not have any speaker slips. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have no raised hands.
Great, thank you. That, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held July, wow, June 9th to 2025, to receive and file the expenditures for the period beginning June 2nd and ending June 13th, 2025, to receive and file the report of contracts executed by the city manager for the period of May 7th through June 2nd, 2025, to receive and file the monthly city treasurer's report on compliance with statements of safekeeping and investment of public funds for May 2025.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. A roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Solerzano.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayor.
Aye.
Councilmember Nomura.
Aye.
And Mayor Al.
Aye. Great, thank you. Next item on our agenda is number seven, which is cancellation of the regular city council meeting of August 11th, 2025.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Ryan Kents here to provide the short presentation for this item. So this item is a request for the city council to consider canceling its regular scheduled meeting on Monday, August 11th, 2025. So as noted in the staff report, the city council does hold regular meetings on the second and fourth Mondays of each month. Traditionally, one meeting during the summer months, either July or August, is canceled. This is done to account for either light agendas or vacation schedules of the council. At this time, staff does not anticipate any urgent items that would be affected or would require council action on August 12th or 11th. And then if a time-sensitive issue does arise, we can certainly schedule a special meeting if need be. And so the, if the council does authorize this cancellation, staff will post proper noticing well in advance to ensure we're in compliance with legal requirements. So staff recommends that council does authorize the cancellation of the August 11th, 2025 meeting, and I'll turn it over to you guys, and we're here for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, seeing none. I will go ahead and open up public comment. I do not have any speaker slips. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have no raised hands.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion.
I move to authorize the cancellation of the August 11th, 2025 city council meeting. A second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next item.
Quick question on this one. In future, if we could put this actual date on our work agenda in January, be able to find out if in fact August, the first meeting in August is better than the last meeting of July, which would be this one, just to get a consensus.
No problem.
The next item on our agenda is number eight, adoption of the fiscal year 2025, 2026 through 2026, 2027, two-year budget, setting related appropriations limits as required by state law, making year-end amendments to the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget, updating budget, and fiscal policies and adopting salary schedules for fiscal year 2025 through 2026.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one brief moment while we get this PowerPoint open.
Mayor, we just have to get this closed, just hoping on another computer, we welcome to wait or if you wanted to take a short break.
We can take a short break. We'll be back in five minutes. Thank you.
All right, and welcome back to the Carpenter City Council meeting. It is June 23, 2025, and we are on agenda item number eight.
Yes, Mayor, Council, community members, I'm pleased to present the city's operating in capital budget. This year marks a milestone in more ways than one. First, the city is transitioning for the first time ever to a two-year budget covering fiscal years '25, '26, and '26, '27, and also the celebration of our sixtieth year anniversary. I believe that this two-year budget demonstrates the city's continued commitment to fiscal responsibility, transparency, and long-term strategic planning. So just a quick review of our agenda for this evening. This is going to be a team effort with myself and Assistant City Manager Ryan Kents and Administrative Services Director Lisette Maldonado, along with all of our department heads here for any specific programming questions related to the departments. So first, we'll just review the process in developing our budget, talk about some key budget considerations as we develop the budget, review the organization of the budget document itself, discuss some of the key terms and important, you know, terms to understand as reviewing the budget, review a description of all of our city funds, we have several, and then a budget summary for our general and Measure X funds and the other funds you see there listed on the screen. And we'll finish discussing Planning for Our Future, which is the review of our departments, divisions, and programs. We'll focus on some budget highlights specifically related to council goals and priorities, also operational efficiencies and things related to cost recovery and revenue generation, and we'll finish with a summary. So I showed this graphic at our last city council meeting. Happy to say we're at the bottom rectangle now, hoping to adopt our budget, but it's been a long process that started several months ago, gaining some public input. Reviewing some of the key budget considerations, so again, the two-year budget, whether it's, you know, thinking two years ahead, five years ahead, 10 years ahead, we're at a point now where the decisions we make today have to be made with these other years in mind. And so taking that step with the two-year budget is a big part of that process. The conservative financial practices, that's, you know, last year when we were moving through the process with AB 939 and our solid waste fees that now pay for one of our positions here in the city, we were very hopeful that that would go through, however, it was not included as part of our budget because we don't, you know, forecast necessarily for those things to happen. You know, in terms of when we're working with our various partners on projections, we're always using the most conservative numbers, and that's been helpful, you know, things like our TOT measure that we passed was a 3% rate increase, and this year you'll notice later on in the presentation that our TOT revenues are only going up by 2.5%. So how do you have a 3% increase that results in a 2.5% increase? Well, it's a number of different things that have been cited, from the California wildfires to global sentiment to just a number of different things that are affecting international tourism mostly. So thankfully, our conservative budget practices have kept us from getting ourselves in trouble. Also, our budget and fiscal policy, so although I'm going to talk about a number of things that we have to look forward to, and in terms of great programs and services, we also have some struggles ahead, we're flattening revenues and increasing expenditures. All that being said, you're going to see that we have, the council has a couple very core fiscal policies. One is that we're going to have a balanced budget, and then our operating revenues are going to meet our operating expenditures, so we have a balanced budget before you. And then the last is that we're always going to have our, essentially our rainy day fund, which is a policy level set at 40% of our general fund and it's a calculation, but make sure that we have money in need of a rainy day. Some other key budget considerations, as I kind of jumped ahead, we have a depleting available fund balance. Best way to think of an available fund balance is our, like a savings account, you save this money up and then you use it for big projects, whether it's pavement or different things to meet matching grant requirements. And so because our revenues are flattening and our expenses are growing, our ability to save is disappearing, which is having an impact on us. And it talks about, one of the things there is increasing subsidies, essentially the costs that we're paying for things and the amount that we're collecting to do them, and that gap is widening. Of course, we consider city council goals and community priorities. There's a number of things that we do, and we don't expect to receive any money back, and so those things are like our library services, our recreation services, and then also maintaining that small beachside town that's been one of our core goals for the last year and now for our next two years. And as we look at ways to potentially increase revenue, one of those considerations is always to maintain that small beachside town where there are some cities that would look to developments and large-scale projects, and we have never turned that way, we've always looked self-supporting. So, and then there's the outside things, the economic headwinds, there's the inflation, approximately 3.5% statewide, that's from the California Department of Finance, and then increases in key expenditure categories, insurance, legal services, public safety, you name it, and then rising costs of construction are also something that's considered throughout the budget. With that, I'll turn it over just to Assistant City Manager Ryan Kents, just to talk about our budget document and where it's available.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez, for kicking us off and getting us started with the budget tonight. So yeah, I'm really excited to let the staff, council, and public know that, you know, our team worked really diligently to complete and publish the full budget document ahead of tonight's hearing. So that, we did that to ensure that both the council and the public could access the entire proposed budget prior to our adoption tonight. So that document is available, as is shown on this slide, on our city's homepage under Hot Topics. That's our very landing, very same landing page when you type in the website address right there, carpenterysca.gov. It's also on our city webpage under Administrative Services Department, under City Budget, and then we also have it available in the city council meeting agenda for this item. It's attached as a link. So we encourage the public to access that document, please read through it, and then we're happy to answer any questions. If members of the public weren't able to come tonight, feel free to reach out to us, happy to answer any questions. We encourage public engagement and public involvement in our budget. So just to go over the budget document organization real quick, so the executive summary is a big-picture summary of the city's finances and priorities. So when you open up your budget, our budget book, you'll see the table of contents, and it includes all these sections. The city profile is a snapshot of carpentry as population, economy, and services. And then we have the all funds section. This is a list of all the city's separate accounts and what each of those is used for. We have the general fund description and overview. This is the city's main fund. This is used for all of our services like parks, police, and streets. And then, of course, we also have Measure X, that's our local sales tax that helps fund core community services. Under operating programs, this provides an overview of all of our department budgets, showing what each department plans to do and spend as part of their department budgets. And then we have, excuse me, the budget fund detail. This is a detailed breakdown of every city fund. We have 20, including both revenues and expenditures, showing how each fund is used to support specific programs, and then also any capital projects or services. And then finally, we have some appendices which provide some extra info. Again, if anyone is, has any questions about our budget book, please feel free to reach out. Okay, now for our key terms. So just to help guide our discussion tonight, we wanted to briefly review some key budget terms that are going to be used throughout the presentation tonight. So discretionary funds, those are the funds that council has full authority to allocate. Those are funds like from the general fund and Measure X. Restricted funds, those are revenues that are earmarked for specific purposes, and they're often tied to state, federal, or grant requirements, and those are restricted, so they can only be used for certain things. The beginning fund balance is what we carry over from the prior year, and then the available fund balance is what remains after setting aside reserves and commitments, essentially our flexible balance. Other key terms for us tonight is our operating deficit. So when annual spending exceeds annual revenues, that is called an operating deficit, and that is a warning sign if that is a persistent thing that we continue to see. One-time revenues or expenses are those that aren't expected to recur, so those are one-time things, such as a grant that comes in or a major equipment purchase that we know is only going to happen once every few or several years. And then a non-recurring expenditure, they're unusual or infrequent, things like legal settlements or emergency responses to things, but those do sometimes occur. And so these distinctions are really important as we evaluate the long-term sustainability of our budget, and it's really important that the council, the public, and staff are familiar with these terms. Okay, now for our city funds. So lastly, for this section, I'll just go over this briefly. So the general fund, it does include Measure X. It supports core city operations like our police services, our parks, our administration stuff, and more. And then our special revenue funds, those are funds like the gas tax or the Thailand's Trust Fund. Those are legally restricted for targeted uses. And then we also have our capital improvement fund. This is used for larger-scale infrastructure and facility investments. So together, these funds shape how we operate and invest in the community, and there are all several other funds that are listed there as examples as well. With that, I'll turn it over to Lisette.
So this table provides a five-year summary of the general Measure X fund budgets, highlighting revenue, expenditures, transfers, subsidies, and the resulting surplus or shortage. I'm going to take a moment to explain the columns. The first column is fiscal year '23, '24 actual. Final audited financial figures for the fiscal year represents what actually happened, not what was budgeted. Fiscal year '24, '25 current budget is the adopted budget for the current fiscal year. '24, '25 estimated final budget, it defines a refined projection of where we expect to end this current fiscal year based on actual activity through the year and updated estimates. And '25, '26 proposed budget, the first year of the new two-year budget cycle, reflects updated priorities, cost assumptions, and funding levels, will serve as the main operating budget for the coming fiscal year. And then the last column, '26, '27, is the proposed budget for the second year of the two-year budget. Council approval locks in direction but allows for a mid-cycle adjustment next year if needed. Revenues remain stable, growing from 17.7 million for fiscal year '24, '25 to 18 million '26, '27. Expenditures are also increasing from 15.2 million to 16.7 million, primarily due to public safety and personnel costs. The next row is our surplus, or I'm sorry, surplus, the net surplus shortage before transfers and subsidies. So for fiscal year '24, '25, we have 2.53 million. For '25, '26, 1.66 million, and for '26, '27, 1.34 million. The surplus is reduced by net transfers and ongoing subsidies to other city funds such as recreation, library, park, and capital projects. These allocations result in a net deficit in all three years, for '24, '25, 4.96 million; for '25, '26, 839,000; and for '26, '27, 1.25 million. While core operations are structurally balanced, the city is using general and Measure X funds to support other programs which drive the net shortage. This emphasizes the need to monitor subsidy levels and ensure they align with long-term financial capacity. This provides a little more detail on our total revenues for general and Measure X funds. Projected increase from 16.3 million in '25, '26 to 16.56 million for '26, '27. Growth reflects stability in property tax, sales tax, and TOT. Tax revenues make up 90.3% of total discretionary revenues. Licenses and permits stabilized at 307,800 for both proposed years. Intergovernmental revenue increases to 463,000 in '25, '26 due to one-time grants for the general plan update, and dropped significantly to 193,000 in '26, '27 as grants conclude. Charges for services moderate decline from 616,900 for '24, '25 to 441,800 for both fiscal years. This reduction reflects a reset to base level assumptions for permits and development-related activity as future activity levels remain uncertain. Revenues are stable overall with limited growth capacity. Most of the city's revenues remain sensitive to economic conditions, particularly TOT and sales tax. Ground revenues are helpful but are not a recurring source, highlighting the need for ongoing local revenue sustainability. The top three major revenue sources on this slide, sales tax is the green line, continues to be the largest, the city's largest single revenue source, making up 33.7% of total revenue for '25, '26, and 34.1% for '26, '27. Property tax is the red line, shows steadily growth year-over-year, 5.19 million '23, '24 to 5.79 million in '26, '27. Reflects increasing property values and ongoing reinvestments, represents again 31.1% of total revenue for '25, '26, and 32.2% in '26, '27. Transit tax is the blue line, recovering steadily from post-COVID projections to reach 3.8 million in '26, '27. Together, these three major sources account for over 87% of total discretionary revenue. Growth is moderate but stable, however, TOT and sales tax are economically sensitive, meaning fluctuations in tourism or consumer spending can impact overall city revenues. And I will pass it to Michael.
I'm sorry, I have a quick question. This, the top three major revenue sources shows the dip of 2020, 2021. Do we know where we were before COVID? Like, I'm curious to know if we are reaching that, are we, have we surpassed what we were in terms of revenues prior to COVID?
Yeah, all three of them have surpassed what we were pre-COVID.
Significantly, or?
Well, yes, especially transient tax, we were at about 3 million, 2.9 million, and now we're closer to the 3.8. But that also includes projections to include for Measure B, passing of Measure B.
Got it.
In the future years, yeah.
All right, and also, I believe we didn't have Measure X then either, so coming out of COVID, you had the growth of coming out of COVID, you had Measure X and a number of different things. It's really made it difficult for us to go back much further because the trends aren't really showing what you would normally like them to show.
And just for, I know, but Measure X was passed in 2018, right? Just for...
It was passed in 20...
But it didn't go into effect. Okay, great, thank you.
It went to effect April 1, 2019.
Got it, thank you.
And then it took a while to get something out.
Totally, I get it.
Great, so now we are reviewing our expenditures, again, in general and Measure X funds, and, you know, the key things that you're going to see here, first, the final estimate for this year is 15.22. We are expected to be at roughly 16.09 for next year, going up to 16.66 for '26, '27, and this reflects a $1.4 million increase over the two-year period. Some of the key expenditure highlights that you'll see there is salary and benefits, that's our second-largest category for general fund and Measure X. It's our largest when you consider all funds, but second for here. That's an increase of, from 5.62 in '24, '25 to 16, or sorry, to 6.06 by '26, '27. Again, as was mentioned earlier, as we were kind of discussing the terms, and I think actually Lisette mentioned it after, that this is estimated final. So what happens is, sometimes what you'll see with these jumps is, we might have vacancies in staff, and so as we get our actuals, it'll result all the vacancies that we have, and then as we project or propose our budget for the next year, we always assume that we're going to have full staffing because we have to make sure we're budgeted for that scenario. Unfortunately, it's hardly ever the case, and then these numbers get changed for their actuals, and that difference is rarely as much when you look at it at the end. So, and the increase in salaries and benefits is mainly cost of living adjustments. For recruiting here has been necessary with the high cost of living, and then benefit costs also continue to go up. One of the things that we talked a lot about last year was public safety. That's going up by 5.28% this year, and is expected, I think we projected for 5% for the year after, which gets us close to 7 million by '26, '27. And, you know, this, of course, reflects the council's commitment to public safety, but also contract cost escalations, and I think at the end of this year, the county is also going back into negotiations with their sheriff's department, and so the, what comes out of those negotiations at the end of next year will also impact the city. So important to note. Also, professional services here, so '25, '26, we're at 2 million, and this reflects a number of different things. You'll see that all of a sudden, you know, it drops, and these are contracts for things like, I want to say one of them is our consultant for the general plan, and so we're expecting for that general plan project to be complete, and that's a $300,000 professional services agreement that disappears after '25, '26, so that's where you'll notice some of the jumps and dips there. It's very cyclical as we go through different projects and hire various consultants to assist us. Contract services is also increasing. This is for the city's website, software, and then there's additional 30,000 for watershed implementation. And then for other operating expenses, you'll also notice increases. We, the city identified a number of different things throughout the city that we wanted to make sure were insured, so we added some increase in insurance, and there's also some funds in there for strategic planning. So those are some of the highlights from this slide.
Can I ask a quick question? Yeah, is it better to ask questions now or at the end?
No, it's whenever you like.
All right, so with the Measure X funds, one thing I think would be really helpful is to see, be able to communicate to the public more how those funds are being used, given that people voted for us to basically adopt that tax, to tax ourselves, and so I think that'd be something that would be really helpful just as we go forward in the budget process, if we can get some kind of like, you know, Measure X at work for you, and just tell the community that, you know, this amount, or, you know, this percentage is going towards, yeah, like, public safety, keeping you safe, these are the ways, just some sort of outreach like that, so that people, because I know they feel a real ownership over Measure X as they should, and so I think it'd be really useful to, for us to really highlight more how that's being parceled throughout the city.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, thank you. It also makes this next slide a little tragic, as I go to point out, you know, the green is our local and state sales tax, so that's Measure X, and what's referred to as the Bradley Burns are 1% of the state sales tax, and you'll see here by '23, '24. Last year, we showed you a different slide that included both the TOT at the time and sales tax. This year, we just wanted to show you sales tax, and you see that in '23, '24, our public safety costs eclipsed all of our sales tax for Measure X and the general fund, and that gap continues to widen by 800,000 by the end of '26, '27. So, you know, we'll definitely come back with that, you know, Measure X is, you know, of course, the library and recreation services, and then is increasingly being used for public safety.
Thank you.
And quickly, while you're on public safety, just, I know that you renegotiated the contract with the sheriffs, the city did last year, is that correct? Two years ago?
Yeah.
And then the next time we, the city, have the opportunity to renegotiate the contract will be in two years?
It's at the end of four. All right, so, yeah, so it's debating, four, five, four, five, the final answer, five years.
Five years, great, thank you.
So, yeah, and one of the, you know, underlying themes here is essentially that the city's going to have to identify additional revenue streams or some cost containment strategies, where we're estimating that without, well, cost containment won't do it alone with that and additional revenues. If we don't do anything by fiscal year '27, '28, we'll be needing to reduce staffing program, you know, definitely have a noticeable... staffing program, you know, definitely have a noticeable impact on the community, which is good that we're now planning two years ahead, and there's a number of things in the budget that we're planning to address these issues, but something definitely needs to be done. So now, as we review our, our subsidies, yeah, essentially, these are programs that don't pay for their, you know, for the service itself. Again, you'll see library fund and recreation services fund in there. The parks maintenance fund is the fund that we use to maintain our parks, and that, that is something that we're looking into, trying to correct that, so that we're bringing in what it costs to maintain our parks. We also have the winter berm there, and general fund and Measure X are increasingly covering these subsidies, which, as I mentioned earlier, is, is part of which, shrinking our available fund balance.
Can I ask really quickly, is, is a park maintenance tax, wait, park maintenance fund, is that the same as a park, parks maintenance tax?
Yes, it's funded, Vice Mayor, it's funded by that park maintenance tax.
And so that was when, it was established in nineteen ninety-five, right? And it hasn't really been significantly updated since then?
Correct.
Okay. But that's not rolled in with the other assessment districts that we are looking at revisiting, is correct?
We're looking all of them, it's a slight difference from the, from the assessment districts, and I'm going to let our assistant city manager, he's helping to lead that project, provide some even more nuanced detail.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, so to answer your question, Councilmember Arizona, we are looking at assessment district number one, which is a right-of-way landscape district. That's primarily our street trees. And then the parks maintenance district, that fund is a parks maintenance tax, that is for all of our parks. So they're two separate funds, and they, they fund specific things that are definitely different. So one is specific to our parks, and one is specific to our landscape trees throughout the city. And then the other assessment district is the winter berm. That is the other one that is severely underfunded, that we're looking at ensuring that it covers the cost to, to actually perform those services. Same with the assessment district number three. We're looking at ensuring that it, we generate sufficient revenue to cover the cost of doing the services for that specific assessment district.
Great, no, thank you for the clarity, because I know that it's important, if people are going to be hearing more about our need to generate more revenue, it's good to be reminded of where those funds are going, so thank you for...
And then I did want to clarify, I, I do, I do have the sheriff's contract right here in front of me. I remember this one well, because I was in Golita when we were negotiating it, it was not that much fun. So it, the first year was twenty-three, twenty-four, and it expires twenty-six, twenty-seven, so we got the expiration correct, but it is a four-year contract. Yeah.
And I have a question, I'm sorry, on the expenditure slide, and I just want to go back to the public safety piece. I mean, this is close to, what, thirty to forty percent of our entire budget in terms of expenditures, at least by twenty-six, twenty-seven, only for public safety. And although we're clearly invested in public safety, I really appreciate you sharing the importance and the need for us to do something, because it doesn't seem very sustainable as a community. There really feels like we're being priced out. And then the other piece, and if maybe you can talk a little bit about the salaries and benefits, I know that the city has really moved to a strategy where, one, we were likely underpaying a lot of our employees, and so as a strategy, we wanted to have better pay for our staff in order to retain staff. Clearly, we've been able to retain staff, like Nick, we've had for twenty years, and I think a lot of that has to do with the, the recent strategy. But can you talk a little bit more about what we've done in that area?
Yes, Mayor, thank you for that question. We, we also have a total benefits and compensation study that is recommended to be done every three to five years, and it's part of this next year's budget to make sure that we're still aligned. We do have some neighboring agencies, you know, typically, you know, your bottom and top overlap with your neighboring agency somewhere. When we did this back, I think, twenty-one, twenty-two, I just got here, and we had decided, you know, you could trail the market, you know, be a little bit behind, you could try to just meet the market and be in the middle, which is what this council aimed for, and you could lead the market, which, you know, cities like Golita do, where they, as a policy decision, aim to be in that top seventy-fifth percentile. I think that this is such a great place to work, that we've been able to be in that middle, and really still be a place that people wanted to be. But of course, that middle is constantly changing, and there's neighboring agencies like Ojai where we don't even overlap at all anymore, where our top doesn't hit their bottom. And that's a really good example, you know, of, of an agency that was having trouble recruiting at a time because of their salaries, and can sort of a, of a lesson on why you want to make sure that you stay in that competitive range. So, part of that total comp study will be to make sure that we're, we're staying there in the middle. There's a number of other things that we're going to talk about later this evening that we do related to our medical benefits, things that we do related to bilingual pay and things like that, that we do to make this a good place to work. And please remind me if I covered all your questions, I feel like...
And I, thank you, City Manager Michael Ramirez. Mayor, I'd just like to add to, to the salaries and benefits, some of those increases are also increases that are out of our control. So for example, one of the benefits is our medical, we do use the CalPERS medical benefit, and that goes up every year, and that's outside of our control. The things that are within our control are the things that council is likely going to approve tonight, and that's part of our budget, which is the COLA, but those are simple cost of living adjustments. So really, the increases that you're seeing there are really most things that are kind of outside of, of the city's control.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, I'll add one more thing to the salary and benefits. And, and the cost there, it also includes the cost for the unfunded liability that we also don't have control of, depends on how the market's doing. And that also is paid for the sheriff, the old sheriff's department, and it's almost half a million for the unfunded liability, and then we have the, our, our, our other staff. So that's part of that cost up there.
So, just to follow, because I had that written down, that the park maintenance fund hadn't, has not been updated since nineteen ninety-five. And, I mean, in nineteen ninety-five, the pool was only five years old. And how many other parks have we added to our city since then? So, I, I mean, that, I, I don't really know if I have a comment as much as like, how come we haven't considered raising that in, you know, thirty-five years?
Councilmember Mayor, through the mayor, sorry, this one is, is a tongue twister. I'll let both Ryan and Michael jump in here, but this goes in line with the questions about the different assessment districts, right? So, part of the reason that, and I think is, you know, kind of an unquestioned question is, why don't we do this all at the same time? Why not just, you know, update everything? And the reason is because all of the city's different funding mechanisms were previously adopted under different regulations and different statutes. And so we have to follow, and they were also adopted prior to what we now call Proposition two eighteen and Proposition twenty-six, which add in much more stringent approval requirements. Sometimes those are protest requirements, sometimes they're actually putting the question out to a vote, similar to like we did with Measure X, and the voters have to approve it. Sometimes it's a balloting procedure, it really depends on kind of where it falls within this Prop two eighteen, Prop twenty-six scheme. And so, for each of the different assessment districts, for each of the, the park tax you're talking about, for any other different funding mechanisms, there may, there are likely a multitude of different, both substantive and procedural requirements that the city would have to follow. So it's not as easy as saying, oh, we're, we're revisiting this, let's do them all at once. So that's kind of the reason that we, with staff, are trying to take a, a good look at, okay, what is the, you know, what's the hurdle to get something like this adopted, and what kind of benefit could it bring to the city? And, you know, how are these funds used, et cetera? And so we're trying to take a, a universal look at everything together.
Thank you.
Nothing to add there. I believe we've, we were here. So, one of the things that we've done to help address some of the unfunded crude liability that LaSette mentioned earlier, is we had established a pension trust fund, and we've been drawing on that, which is what is intended for, to help offset the costs of pension. So, you see that being used in fiscal year twenty-six and twenty-seven. And again, the, the story is, is that there's nothing, without the savings, there's nothing to go replenish it. It doesn't mean you shouldn't spend it, it, it is there to be used for that, that purpose. And I think it benefits the city for the long term to do that, rather than not, similar to deferred maintenance. Earlier on some slides, you saw, you know, like a four million dollar spend, you know, expense last year, and that was, you know, our pavement. And had we not done that, we probably couldn't afford to do half of that now, and it would cost, you know, more. So some of these expenditures are definitely planned and strategic, but what is, is not planned is, is the inability to fill them back up. This fiscal stability, this here you'll see is increasing. So despite all of the things that we'll talk about, and our need to, to increase our, our revenue streams and increase our, improve operational efficiencies, the city remains committed and has budgeted for, again, we'll, we'll call it the rainy day, and that policy level of forty percent. So that is not being compromised. The capital asset replacement is, is shrinking a little bit, that's set at a policy goal of one million, so it's not meeting that, nor is the special projects also has one million, so again, being spent strategically, but not at the level that we would like it to be. And then here is, is the story, is that unassigned fund balance or available fund balance, and shrinking from two point seven to one point nine, down to eight hundred thousand. So it's the next fiscal year after this, where we're looking at, at some reductions in programming and staffing unless we do something.
Can I ask a quick question about that? So, like, just because this is my first time going through it, is there like a, a minimum available fund balance that you feel comfortable with, or that we would feel comfortable with having? Or is like, I know that we have this, the forty percent fiscal stability reserves, right? But I'm just curious if that, as a city, we have like a best practice, or a thing that you feel best with, or that we would feel best with?
Councilmember Mayor, through the mayor. So our, our forty percent, we were at, at a conference where we heard from one of the cities, and I think they were encouraging everybody, you should really shoot for a twen-, I think they said twenty or twenty-five percent, you know, fiscal stability balance. And so I think we exceed that in some ways. Now, of course, other cities might have multiple, you know, reserve funds, and so you can't, it's not always apples to apples. I think there, we, we're at a good level, and that potentially could be reduced in terms of the available fund balance. So I think anytime we're not adding to it, not really comfortable with it. There, there is times, of course, where it's strategically planned, because again, it is that savings account, and so you're, you're building up the money to fix the car, or to, you know, do the home renovation, and for us, it's pavement and other things, but you'd still like to see as you're making those large expenditures, that somewhere there's an excess amount of revenue that you're bringing in to fill it on the back end, even if it's not the amount that you spend it. And so the fact that we are at a point where there is no money going to backfill it, I would say that I'm at an uncomfortable place now.
Thank you.
When I first started here, we actually had a higher reserve, we had fifty, fifty percent, and so we brought it back to council, and we reduced it down to the forty. So the forty percent also comes from like GFOAs, also best practices to have that reserve. Secondly, on our treasury report, when you see it, it says that we're stating, as a treasurer, or I'm the treasurer, I'm stating that I have enough money to cover the next six months. So that's the other important component to this, because that number, that, that amount is not, is not budgeted to be expensed, so which is available at the bank to cover six months if something happens, as well.
That's helpful, thank you.
And then the best practice for maintaining available fund balances, sixteen to twenty percent of annual expenditures. So just to put that into numbers, with the fifteen million dollar general fund budget, that's roughly two point four four million that you want to have in your available fund balance.
Thank you. And, and again, what's not seen there is the deferred maintenance, so all the things that we should be investing in now that we're not are just increasing in cost, both as goods increase in cost, and also as the damage increases and the cost of repairing them increase. So this here shows our revenues, this is, you know, just for visual purposes, and shows basically here's us coming out of, of COVID, and, you know, it is increasing, it's just not at the same percentage that you see expenditures increasing. This is that planned expense here, this was, I believe, our pavement project, but now is still, has a trajectory higher than our expenses. And then, of course, the corresponding fund balance that was increasing, and now is continuing to decrease, it's just a visual of what we just discussed. And this is another graphic that just shows you some proportionality here of the, that fiscal stability, forty percent maintaining. The red, again, are unassigned or available fund balance decreasing. Again, this is really the same as the last one, but it's just showing you it in terms of proportionality of our fund balance. And with that, happy to take any more questions before turning it over. Okay, I will turn it over, I think, to LaSette.
Okay. So now I'll continue with special revenue fund summary. So this summary summarizes the, sorry, this table summarizes the revenues, expenditures, and net results for the city's special revenue funds, which includes restricted funding sources such as grants, assessment districts, and transportation-related revenues. For the, for all five years shown, expenditures exceed revenues resulting in an annual operating shortfall before transfers. Twenty-four, twenty-five estimated final is one point seven five million, twenty-five, twenty-six proposed, one point six five million, and for twenty-six, twenty-seven, one point seven five million. The transfers are, the transfers there are made out of these funds to support capital projects. The subsidies, these funds receive subsidies from general and Measure X to stay solvent. Subsidies total two point one million to two point four million annually in the proposed budgets. They're essential to keeping services running in programs like parks recreation and library services.
And just a quick question, so of those special funds, which are the ones that are, I guess, most vulnerable right now in terms of what's needed to, to supplement them?
Can you repeat that?
So which, of the special funds, like, are there any that are in, in kind of the, the most difficult straits right now in terms of needing to be addressed, or else the services that they help to fund will be impacted?
It's mostly the recreation services, and, because there's nothing we can do on the revenue side to increase and make them balance, it's either you cut the programs to get closer and produce the subsidies. Our other funds, for example, we have Measure A, that's kind of consistent, we get about a million dollars a year, it's kind of stable. And we also get road maintenance rehab money that's, that we use for our maintenance, it's about three hundred and fifty to three hundred and ninety thousand a year. So those are all like consistent, and they're all being used, but the main ones are the subsidy ones and the assessment districts, of course.
Got it, yeah, okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to, through the mayor, I'd like to add, though, in terms of recreation, there's, there's really nothing that can be done to recoup the cost of what it all costs, but there's something that can be done. We brought the, the recreation fees and facility schedule. That has, again, the reason why I want to bring that up is, is part of doing what we're going to have to do over the next two years has a lot to do with education, and the city has been subsidizing things for so long, and we found that as we're making these small adjustments, for example, adjusting a facility rental from what it was to something new, and in, in some cases, it's, you know, hundred percent, you know, three, four hundred percent increase, and it's still the lowest in all the area, that's how far behind we were, but it's been shocking in some instances for folks that have utilized that space, but it's, it's really part of the city has to take, you know, a full-on commitment to, we're going to try to get what it costs to have staff at a, at a facility rental and different things, and so those things... And so those things may not bring in, you know, large amounts of dollars, but they're going to be key in helping us moving forward. As the questions have been is like, why didn't we do something sooner? How did we get so far behind? Usually that's from not making those adjustments as they happen until you're telling people, sorry, it's going to go up by this many times. And even though you're also saying, and it's still the lowest, it has that impact. So we're trying to make sure, especially on the recreation side, that we're making these annual incremental increases. So it doesn't have that large impact that I know it's having on folks this year. But just, this is the position that, that we are in.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. So I get the pleasure of doing the capital improvement program. So before I get into the numbers here, I did want to provide some background on how this year's capital improvement project list was developed. So the list before you on the next couple of slides is based on, oh, sorry, I'm going to, I had to set the stage. It's based on guidance from the March 25th, 2025 city council meeting where we had our CIP workshop. So the council adopted a set of criteria for prioritizing capital projects. And I'll just remind the council and the public what that criteria is now. So there's five criteria items. One is strategic alignment. And this means, does the project support the city's strategic plan, our general plan or council priorities? The next is deferred maintenance. Michael referred to this earlier. Does it address their aging infrastructure or reduce future risks, costs or service disruptions? Number three is available grant funds. Has the project received or is it likely to receive outside grant funding? And then available local funds. Is the city's share of funding already budgeted or secured? And then finally, community benefit. How broadly and equitably will the project improve safety, access or economic vitality? And then, you know, given the city's financial constraints, you know, that we've touched on several points during tonight's presentation, the availability of grant funding really rose to the top. And it was the most decisive factor this year for selecting our CIP list. So that the projects that are brought in, in with outside funds, that rose to the top of the list. So there are several projects that have some significant grant funding, which I'll show you shortly. And this allows us to move forward with some key infrastructure projects while also minimizing the impact to the city's general fund. So the, for fiscal year 2526, this is our list of CIPs. And I'll, I'll do a little background here as well on the context of the slides. So what you see here is all 11 of the projects that are proposed for fiscal year 2526. Each of these are funded through multiple sources. And I'll just describe those quickly here. You see Measure X, that is our local sales tax. We have the RMRA, that's the road maintenance rehabilitation account that's funded by the SB1 gas taxes. You have the gas tax with our, which is traditional state gas tax revenues for transportation. We have our Thailand's trust fund. This is revenues from coastal land leases, namely our Chevron land leases, which will terminate at some point when they complete the work there. That is restricted to coastal related uses. So we can only use those funds for coastal related issues. Measure A, that's the Santa Barbara County's transportation tax. Then we have grants, as I mentioned, DIFs is our development impact fees. That's funds paid by developers to support infrastructure that those development projects will have an impact on. And then finally donations. So for fiscal 26, this is our list of projects. And you can see our total CIP funding is 8.2. And just some things to note, you'll see that most of these funds are coming from, from grants. And that's why they're listed here as selected projects. For fiscal year 2627, we have two projects. This is the Dune and Shoreline Management Project and the Carpenteria Avenue Replacement Project. We allocated 7.5 million in total for capital funding. These investments really do continue to reflect the criteria that I just described that was set by the council with a focus on safety, infrastructure preservation and leveraging our outside funding. A major highlight here, as you can see, is the Carpenteria Avenue Bridge Replacement Project. This is going to be one of the largest city capital improvement projects in our history. So it's a big project for us. This project will enhance public safety, modernize some of our aging infrastructure and improve multimodal access across key east-west corridor of the city. And as you can see, it brings in significant grant funding. And that's why it was selected, almost 6 million in federal funding. This will allow the city to advance, like I mentioned, this major project without impacting our, our general fund.
And if I could just enter, you know, add some comments to that. So again, that available fund balance, where that becomes really important and how we leverage that with the CIP projects is, and, and Jeanette is probably could talk about this in more detail. But we talked about our pool and that million dollar project. And we have some, I think, really great prospects of privately raising that $500,000. But in order to apply for the land and water conservation fund grant that would pay the other 50%, we have to certify that we would move forward with that project regardless of, right, if we receive 50% or 40%. And so when you have that available fund balance, you can comfortably do that. If not, you are really sort of, you know, betting on that community support at that point. And that's again, where that available fund balance, even though in this case, we would expect not to spend it at all, right? You're more comfortable certifying those types of things. And so despite the fact that we are more heavily grant funded now, that doesn't necessarily make it as easy as people might think because of the, the matching requirements.
I have a question for the CIP projects, the 11. And I think this is good for the public to know too, that it doesn't mean that those 11 projects will be fully completed. So some of them are simply funded for the design, similar to what you're saying. And the additional funding would have to be either raised or come from other grants or whatnot. But I do have a question. Out of the 11, which projects do we foresee being completed within the next year?
Mayor and council, I, I think that I've asked John Lisette to come up and answer that question for us. I will say that the Carpenteria Avenue Bridge Replacement Project is going to commence next year. And that'll be a multi-year project. And then if I could just refer the public to our budget document as well, that does provide our CIP worksheets with details on specific funding amounts and where it's going. But I hope John can come up and provide a specific answer on what projects will be completed next year in fiscal 27. Thank you, John.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, to your question. Off the bat, for fiscal year 2526, it would be the Carpenteria Avenue Bridge Replacement Project, the Carpenteria High School Area Crosswalk Project, the Linden Avenue Improvements Project, and all three of them are grant funded. Oh, Franklin Creek Trail Project as well.
That will be commencing, but not completely finished.
I anticipate completion 2526 for the ones that I've, that I've mentioned. Again, Carpenteria Avenue Bridge Replacement Project, Linden Avenue Improvements Project, Carpenteria High School Area Crosswalk Safety Improvements Project, Franklin Creek Trail Project. So those, those projects, our design have been completed for the most part. Franklin Creek is pretty close. You, you heard in the earlier part of the meeting about that being in the pipeline, so to say, to, to, to our planning commission. But the Carpenteria High School Crosswalk Safety, that design is complete. Actually, we, we've received bids for that already. Linden Avenue Improvements, we received bids. And Carpenteria Bridge Replacement Project, I believe you're aware, the clearing of gravel is complete. Now we're just waiting for the utility companies to relocate. And we should be going out to bid within the fiscal year 2526, May, or excuse me, late, late winter.
So that would, that would, that won't be complete until 27, right?
That's right. So I caught myself with that. So 2627 would be, Carpenteria Avenue Bridge would go over there. But commence, correct, 2526, those particular projects.
Thank you.
I will now continue with the all funds summary. This slide provides a comprehensive view of all revenues and expenditures across all city funds. Revenues grow significantly from 2324 to fiscal year 2425, then flatten out around 29 million. Expenditures decline from the fiscal year 2425 peak due to capital projects. Fiscal year 2526 expenditures are projected at 30.5 million and 30.3 million for 2627. Although, although the city is moving forward, towards closing the gap, ongoing structural deficits require continued cost containment and revenue enhancement strategies to ensure long-term sustainability. This, all funds trend. This chart visually tracks the city's total revenues and expenditures across all funds over fiscal year 2020, 21 through 2026, 2026, 27. Expenditures rise sharply to 36.4 million at 14 million jump, while revenues increased to 29.2 million, driven by one-time cost, capital projects or planned drawdowns from reserves. Expenditures declined to 30.5 million and 30.3 million, more aligned with revenues around 29 million. A little bit more detail on total revenues for all funds. Revenue show a notable increase from 21.8 million in 2324 to just over 29 million in subsequent years. This growth is primarily driven by intergovernmental revenue and tax revenues. Largest, the, the most stable revenue source accounting for over half of total revenues continue the modest upward trend from 15.6 million in 2324 to 17.0 million in 2627. Intergovernmental revenues, major driver of year-over-year increases, jumped from 2.7 million in 2324 to over 9 million in 2425 through 2526. Charges for services steadily increase across the forecast from 1.5 million in 2324 to 2.07 million in 2627. Reflects the recent adjustments in the master fee schedule. Licenses and permits increased in fiscal year 2425, then stabilized to 307,800. Reflects conservative revenue projections due to uncertain development activity. And then miscellaneous revenues are elevated in 2425 and then returned to baseline, primarily due to FUMA reimbursements in current year. This slide, our total expenditures for all funds. 2425 marks the peak at 36.4 million. Spending then declines in 2526 and 2627 to 30.5 million and 30.3 million. Again, this is mainly due to the capital expenditures. Continued salaries and benefits continue to be the largest recurring cost, 8.7 million in 2526 to 9.1 million in 2627. Reflects COLA benefit adjustment and staffing changes. Second largest category, again, as I mentioned, the 6.2 million to 6.95 million over the two-year period for the public safety. Reflects contractual cost increases. Capital, major capital peaks in 2425 at the 15.4 million and then drops significantly to 8.3 million in 2526 and then 7.55 million in 2627.
Thank you, Lisette. So I have another pleasure of now introducing our department programs. So this is the section that focuses on the department programs and, and their associated initiatives. For each department, we'll, we'll review the core responsibilities, how they're structured and the specific programs that each department manages. This section also presents some budget highlights for each department. These highlights were developed under the guidance of the city council's goals and priorities that we developed with the council and with the community input. And that was established through our long strategic planning process that Michael mentioned that started way back in January. And then we'll summarize some key initiatives, planned investments and any notable changes that are proposed for the next upcoming fiscal years. So for the general government department, which I'll start with here, this includes the city manager's office or the city administration's office, the city clerk, human resources, legal services and public safety. And all their associated programs are listed here as well. The proposed budget for this department is 11.2 million for fiscal year 26 and 11.7 million for fiscal year 27. So moving into some specific initiatives for the general government department. Under city administration, we are proposing that we do, or allocate 35,000 in fiscal year 27 for another round of our citywide strategic planning. This will support the ongoing implementation and refinement of the city council's goals and priorities for the next fiscal 28 to 29 budget and strategic, strategic planning cycle. We also will be doing a development, if approved by the council tonight, the city council legislative policy platform. This will help formalize the city's positions on regional and state issues and allow staff to take action once the council approves this legislative platform without having to bring every single legislative item to the council. So that'll be an efficiency thing for the city as well. And that will be covered by city legal services contract and staff time. Also, we are proposing continued support for the state of the city events and some direct engagement efforts with a 2,000 to our 50 budget in both fiscal year 26 and 27. This will also use support from staff to help our council members with your district events. And then on the law enforcement side, we are proposing 4,000 per year in fiscal 26 and 27. This is for sheriff deputy overtime to implement the new, or what will become the new e-conveyance or e-bike enforcement strategy. This will help regulate digital delivery and advertising platforms. And it is a little bit outside of the scope of their contract. So that's why we're proposing some extra funds there.
Can I ask a quick question about that? Is that, so is that something that is being done in collaboration with COSD? Or, because I know that they're, they're a part of the e-conveyance enforcement process, right? They've been part of that conversation. So is that, are they paying into that too?
They will not be paying into it. That is just from our budget. But they are assisting with the development of those programs and what be, what will eventually be implemented.
So then the 4,000 for the, is for sheriff deputy overtime? So that wouldn't be part of their kind of community policing or community engagement part that they already are bringing in, like with their coffee with the cops and things like that? This would be separate on top of that?
It's a really good question, Vice Mayor and through the mayor. You're, that, it, it does not. Yeah, this is strictly city funds. It's a strictly city initiative at this point with, with their input and their guidance. But we will be directing the sheriff's department and providing that oversight. Well, they'll, they'll provide input absolutely in their key stakeholders as part of this process. But it is a city-directed event, so it is a city-funded.
Okay. And maybe if, if it's something that where there's overlap with the schools, like I know, you know, they were asked to do some presentations. If, if there's more of that going on, could that maybe be something we could look into partnering with COSD on in terms of cost sharing?
Vice Mayor through the mayor, I think that's a terrific suggestion. And that, that is definitely something that we can look into for sure.
Right. Thank you.
I mean, just on that note, and this is probably not the time for this, but we're here. So I, I see that, like, I, I'm wondering if like, we really need the sheriffs to be doing these presentations in the classroom if this is the cost that it is? Or if this is something where we can develop a strategy and do these presentations without them? And then just utilize them exclusively for one component of this?
Yeah, councilmember Mayor through the mayor. Just one small correction. So for the presentations, that was not included in this overtime cost. That presentation was given by our police chief and is part of our contract. This would be for bringing motors who specialize in that type of work related to e-bikes and, you know, any of that enforcement there, coming in and doing extra time and then maintaining our, because the idea is, is that it would be, you know, a full day, eight hours focused, you know, one to two days a quarter to go out and, and enforce to also supplement the education. But the patrol that we actually pay for as part of our contract would have to continue to be available for responding to various. to continue to be available, um, for, uh, responding to various calls. So it's, it's not included in that, and to, and we also, um, did not ask, uh, the school district for any of the funding, um, to say that as well. I know that, I believe, we received a public comment that they're actually doing their budget, uh, tomorrow, um, evening, but, uh, we did not ask them, and, but I'm happy to do so.
And I appreciate that comment, uh, council member, mayor, cause as we were talking about, I mean, that, and as the mayor was talking about, that, that law enforcement contract is already something that is growing and is not sustainable. I see that this is only four thousand dollars, but that's, it feels, uh, tough to be paying extra to, for overtime when it's already taking up so much of our budget, especially when the e-conveyance in particular was something that the school district approached us about providing more outreach for.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, through the mayor, um, again, and I'll definitely reach out to the school district. Um, one of the other items that mentioned here that's a, a, a little bit larger too and has been something that the city has had a history of doing is contributing for overtime related to, uh, sheriff's deputies at the avocado festival. Um, and so that's another thing for conversation, cause that's also outside of our, of our, uh, contract, and, uh, this year was, uh, just over twenty-one thousand. The city didn't contribute all of that, um, and was contributed by the festival itself, but those are the type of things, uh, hard decisions the council have to consider moving forward on how much we're able to support those or needing those events to, uh, support themselves as we continue to deal with, with our issues. But that, that's partially the, one of the reasons I wanted to highlight it is so that we could, uh, have this conversation.
So would we be having a conversation about the fifteen thousand for the Avo Fest now, or would that be for next year's? Like, is that already committed for the next cycle, the fifteen thousand?
It is part of our, of our proposed budget, but you do have, um, that opportunity to make, you know, if, if the council wanted to make any major changes to the budget, we have, uh, reserved next Monday as like a, a, um, uh, an extra meeting in case we need to come back and do a full-on meeting, but if you wanted to make minor adjustments, uh, to the budget, uh, you know, like this, we, we would be able to make a motion with these minor, uh, amendments and, and approve that.
And just for clarity, that fifteen thousand is for fiscal twenty-six and twenty-seven, so it's budgeted, uh, fifteen thousand dollars for each year.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's a total of thirty thousand, and what would, what would happen with any of these funds is it would go back to the available fund balance.
Mm-hmm. And do we know, I know we've talked before about the cost of maybe having, you know, outside security, would, would that be more expensive than paying for the sheriff deputy overtime or, or less expensive?
Uh, the, uh, Vice Mayor, through the mayor, so the, uh, cost of security would be substantially less, it would just be a matter of whether the event holders wanted to utilize security. I know that they do for some of like the alcohol areas and making sure that people stay there, but then there's other item, there's other times where they need enforcement, and I know that I've been there and I've seen, uh, I don't know if they're arrests exactly, but definitely, uh, something that would be beyond security. Uh, and then there's a ratio there, right, of how much law enforcement to security, and those are all things that the, um, you know, event organizer, uh, considers, and then also as they turn in their permit applications, it goes to, I think as Fire mentioned earlier, that they get their various permits for events, and Fire will, uh, have their, uh, emergency EOP, I think, emergency operations plan where they'll make, um, recommendations on what's the minimum requirements for these types of things, uh, is also to, to be considered. Uh, but the city's contribution towards it is something for you all to be able to, um, discuss this, anyway.
So if we, if we didn't want to pay the fifteen thousand dollars a year, then that would, that would go to the event of, to fund, is that correct?
Yes, uh, council member Clark, through the mayor, yes, so if the, if we weren't a, uh, you know, if we didn't fund that fifteen thousand dollars in the event organizers, uh, whether through, um, you know, the, the funds that they generate for the event or perhaps increasing costs for a booth, or however it is that they go about it, letting them know as soon as possible, uh, would probably be, um, ideal so that they could plan accordingly. And, and the city does not, you know, I wish I could provide some more information, we haven't had, uh, you know, a formal thing where we've collected their budgets at the end of each year, and I haven't, I, I don't have any profit and loss statements to show or anything like that. Um, that's one of the things, actually, if the, if the council wanted to continue, right, for at least a year or at least two years with the avocado festival, one of the directions could be, is like, we want to see a budget and a, and a profit and loss statement and just ensure that there's not a lot of money being made for the event and that you're subsidizing law enforcement. Those are things that could be part of a, an agreement and still, uh, maintain the, uh, contract if you'd like, or not the contract, but the, um, support.
I think that makes sense, you know, if it's, cause because it's, it's not a city event, I mean, it's happening at, in the city, right? But I think if we're providing this extra law enforcement, like overtime costs for this amazing event that is not our event as well, it would be helpful just to see what other options there might be for that, just given that, you know, we have all this, these other, um, costs that we're needing to, to take into consideration right now.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, and that's another data point, and you guys have asked this, I think all of you at one point about, well, what's the benefit? It, it'd be nice for me to be able to say, we had this much increased sales tax, we had this and that, and we just don't have that data a, at this point. I do know that, um, you know, there are cities like, I think, Galita that have economic development agreements with the chamber, and the, the, um, city actually pays, I think, like forty-five thousand dollars for three events for the chamber to put on, so there's sometimes that cities do see that as an investment and they do contribute and they, the benefit to bring in the events in and folks coming in. Um, and, uh, not to say that it is or isn't a benefit, but we haven't been collecting that data, and I think if we want to move forward with that investment to the degree possible, I would say that we should have these agreements in place and be requir, uh, you know, requiring these budgets to come in, uh, so that we can make better decisions moving forward.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the avocado festival is a deeply beloved event, and I don't think, I, I personally, on city council, was not aware until this process, the additional costs that the city is taking on in order to make sure that this event runs smoothly, and I think that there's, that's just what a good partnership is, is just mutual understanding and clarity, so.
Uh, yes, uh, council member, mayor, through the mayor, one of the things, and, and John can, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but another contribution that the city makes is so all of Public Works' time in terms of logistics, and all of that is an in-kind contribution from the city so that we don't send them a bill for that. Um, so if, if we didn't make this contribution, or we made a smaller contribution, or we changed this contribution in future years, the city does, uh, contribute an in-kind amount, and I, I don't know what that amount is, but I can come back at a, at a future meeting and also share how much the, the value of the in-kind support of Public Works is. So there still is that, that connection there.
Do you have an estimate of how much we've contributed in the past, or year after year for this?
Yes, Mayor, I, I think that amount, uh, between fifteen and, and twenty thousand dollars has been, uh, around that contribution, uh, that I've seen from previous staff reports.
Okay. And is that data easily accessible, just in general, that you were referring in terms of like the increase in economic vitality, the increase in like, sales tax that we see during that month, or anything like that?
That, uh, Mayor, sorry, um, that information, uh, I'm not sure how easily available it is. I know that, you know, we work with HDL and they're able to give us sales tax information, but I don't know that they can isolate it to, you know, a three-day period. We would have to, uh, be very creative in looking at those types of things. I know, uh, when I was working for the city of Oxnard, and we used to host boxing tournaments, and that was a big question, is it worth it to have all of this come in? And I remember that there was, um, uh, Conventions Bureau, I forget the name of the organization, that just had a formula that you could do based on the type of event and the number of days. Again, it's, it's more of an estimate, but these are people that have kind of done all of this work in other areas, and then they provide you with, uh, some sort of calculation to get a general idea, and so we could look out for something like that without maybe being able to pinpoint the numbers exactly.
Okay.
One other question, quick question, just to make sure I've got it right. Um, do we also charge an event fee for that, for the avocado fest? Or is there any type of s- formula setup or agreements?
Uh, yes, uh, council member Nomar, through the mayor, I know that there's a, a special event application, and John, I'm not sure if you're, um, for the avocado festival, if you're able to add any additional information on whether we charge a special event application fee, or if that's waived, and approximately how much that special event application is.
We talk about the avocado festival? Yes, so bef, um, every year before you is the special event permit application. It, it, it's presented to you for two recommendations. One is to approve this special event permit application, waive the fees, as well as designate, yes, designate Linden Avenue as a park, from right away to a park. And just like the city manager mentioned, there are, uh, city, there are, there's past council members, councils that have contributed to the cause. I've seen various dollar amounts, and those contributions are at the, at the approval of the city council, and as well as taking on the cost of security, as well as, uh, what the city manager mentioned, Public Works Department support in regards to temporary traffic control, as well as cleaning, street sweeping, and, uh, cleaning sidewalks.
Thank you. Well, I know the, um, the avocado fest contributes, uh, monies back to the nonprofit sector, that seems to help a lot, but it'd be interesting to see also what that would be, that, that number is too, and I don't know if they'd share that or not, but the last, uh, amount that I saw was given out didn't seem in balance with the money that was coming in, so I'm just, just curious if we keep track of that, or if we should.
Uh, yeah, council member Nomar, I, you know, I would think that it would be a good idea when the city's having a partnership like that and making a contribution, that we would have some basic, uh, requirements. This is part of a lot of the work that we've been doing here in the city, is we've had, you know, informal or legacy-type agreements that we're looking to formalize, and I, I promise you that we're getting through those, uh, month by month, but that is something that I would, I would recommend here, um, to do for sure.
And I just wanted to say that I think these are both really important initiatives. Obviously, the avocado festival is just, you know, sacred to carpentry, and then the e-conveyance enforcement, I, these are good things, it's just, given the financial situation the city is in, going forward, the idea that we're paying sheriff deputy overtime for a contract that's already taking up so much of our budget, does, just doesn't feel, it feels like something that needs to be readdressed.
Yeah, and like, just to, like, exactly what the vice mayor said is, i- that if we're taking on that cost, that we're doing it in a really, with like, with a good, positive feelings, because again, that is a huge cost, um, on top, I mean, I, it's like, is it a huge cost? It's a huge cost when you add it to the forty percent of our budget that is going to public safety. Um, and, you know, this, we're, we are a service city, you know, the pool doesn't pay for itself, our, our community pays for these things because we want them here, and I believe the community wants the avocado festival here, but I also think that it's, um, it's a good thing for everybody to know exactly what they're paying for, like.
I, I see it as a partnership.
Yeah, it's what, exactly.
If it's transparent, I have, definitely, I mean, both these items here, um, uh, have merit on improving the community, but it, it would be nice to see these actually addressed as partnerships.
Yeah, council, uh, through the mayor, I, yeah, I agree, it's, it's one of those things that kind of go back to the, the, the just increasing of facility rental fees for recreation. We have done certain things, um, a long way for, I mean, so long, certain way, and it feels, uh, sometimes weird, right, as we're kind of evolving, but this is not out of the ordinary for, you know, many cities to do these things and have these agreements, and, you know, we mentioned that, you know, they're giving, uh, to the nonprofits, right, so we don't want to, you know, have them take that fee, and then it takes away from the nonprofits, but also the city gives a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to nonprofits, right, through, uh, community service support grants, so we, you know, consider those types of things. And then, um, you know, uh, similarly with the sheriff's department, um, you know, um, sorry, with the school district and the sheriff's department, is that, I think the city has a history of going, hey, we'll, we'll take care of this and we'll do it, and, and now we're in a place where as we move forward, we'd say, hey, in partnership with the school district, this is what it would cost, um, and would you help contribute to this? Again, it would not be something that is typical for what we've done in the past, but it's very, very normal for, right, lots of other cities, and these are the types of things that we're starting to do, and sometimes they're uncomfortable because it's just been how we've done it for so long, but these are things that I think we need to start considering.
And especially looking at the, what the finances are going to be in future years, is we're going to have to find ways to economize.
Oh.
And then, um, mayor, council, if, oh, sorry, go, go ahead, council member Clark, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Should I repeat what I just said?
Sure.
No, I mean, I said, I think looking at stuff like this is especially important, considering what we've just seen about how we're, we're getting increasing expenses and diminishing revenues, and, and something's got to give.
And I have just one other question. We don't have, um, I, I think of another large event, which is the St. Joseph's Fair. We don't contribute in any way to that overtime. Um, the church, uh, contracts the sheriff's department on their own, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, my understanding is that, um, that is correct.
And Mayor, if I may, a, a question was asked earlier, the estimated cost for temporary traffic control, street cleaning services that John mentioned we conduct, I do, I did pull up our September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four special event permit application for the twenty-twenty-four Cal- California Avocado Festival staff report, and we do mention a dollar figure there. We do have an estimated cost of thirty thousand dollars, which includes staff overtime and contractor fees, again, to conduct the temporary traffic control and street and sidewalk cleaning services.
And I, I do expect, you know, uh, back at this time, and just wanting to be fair across the board, our, our contract for our street sweeping was getting out of control, and we went and brought that in-house. Uh, I don't know that that's probably a large amount of the thirty thousand, but probably lowers it just slightly, so the, the city is making a, a, I think, a substantial in-kind, uh, contribution, uh, you know, in addition to this overtime, uh, support.
Okay. Are you, uh, Mayor, are we okay to continue?
Um, I think I just want to make sure, do we want to propose any changes? I think now would be the appropriate time to do that, so we don't move too far ahead.
Um, I just think, uh, for, in terms of, for me, it was, um, to reach out to CUSD about the e-conveyance enforcement strategy and see if there's a partnership there. Um, and then it sounded like, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but that you, to reach out to avocado festival organizers and get their kind of, um, balance sheet so we can see how our contribution thus far has, um, fits into that, and then I'm not sure if there was anything else with that one.
That's it. Just want to see a report.
Okay.
And, and Vice Mayor, I do want to say, last year, I, I had a, uh, Mike Lozaro's the main event organizer, and he has come here usually after the event and reports on how much money was, was given. Um, uh, I did talk to him, and he was very happy to, to enter into an agreement, he's always extremely appreciative for whatever support that we can give, and understands, I think, fully if the city wouldn't, would not be in a position, um, that's been, um, my, all of my interactions with, with Mike, and, uh, so I think he'll be happy to move forward with that.
Great. So everyone's in agreement with those two changes? Okay. Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Moving on.
Uh, sorry, Mayor, just clarify one thing, so for the agreement, uh, with avocado festival, want to clarify, uh, whether we would handle that at a staff level, or whether you'd want that to come back to council?
I think we would want it to come back to council to determine whether or not we, our contribution would be as high as it's currently proposed.
I would agree with that, I think it's, um, good transparency for public to be aware of that also.
And then similarly for the, the partnership with the, uh, uniform, Carpentry Unified School District, uh, before we move forward with that initiative and the use of those, those funds, is that something we'd want to bring back, you know, any conversations we have to the school district about a partnership prior to moving forward with that program?
Or could that be part of the CUSD city committee meetings? We haven't had one of those yet, so that could be something, maybe that could go through there?
That's not the context of this budget.
True, no, that's true, yeah. Okay, so maybe come back then, do you think?
Um, I think I'm more, I, I feel like with the e-conveyance and the overtime without, we're talking about a very strategic, strategic strategy or strategy that we haven't quite developed yet, so I would be comfortable with staff going and speaking to them, but leaving it in the budget as it's proposed, but I'd be curious to know what others think with those four thousand dollars. Yeah, I, um, I mean, when we parcel it out, and I hear that it's for a very specific thing, which is to, like, the motors there to do, uh, that specific job, it feels like what the community is asking for is
It feels like what the community is asking for is for us to be doing that. And I think it's smart for us to do that.
I would agree with that, yes. It's a safety factor.
Yeah, I would like, I mean, then I would, in that case, I, that sounds good to me. But I would also like just to know if this includes any of the outreach to the schools and everything. Because if it doesn't, if it's just like for the community, then that, that makes sense. But just given that the schools have been such, have been very firm in their request for these services from the sheriffs, I just, I would want to know if that's something that they don't want to pay into and also they expect to receive.
Yeah, Vice Mayor through the mayor, so the presentations have been, again, that Move Santa Barbara has done that without any cost to the city. And then the chief did his presentation as just part of what our contract was, so there was no additional cost. If, you know, we were to want to ramp that up to several presentations, I don't know whether the, you know, the chief could keep up with that. But depending on the frequency of that, I'm sure the chief is still happy to get out there and make those presentations as part of our existing contract.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, mayor. So continuing with the general government department budget highlights, under staff recruitment, retention and development, Michael did reference this earlier. We are proposing to conduct a comprehensive organizational assessment and classification and comp study. This is a key investment in internal equity and market competitiveness, as Michael mentioned earlier, with an $80,000 budgeted amount in fiscal year '26. For emergency preparedness, we will finalize the updated emergency operations plan that is on the docket. And we want to expand community readiness, readiness, sorry, through annual CERT, the program that was mentioned earlier tonight by the fire chief, and the listos trainings as well. This work is supported by a $25,000 allocated amount in both fiscal year '26 and '27. And then finally, in communication and community promotions, we're developing a comprehensive communication strategy. We really want to be comprehensive and strategic in this to improve engagement, accessibility and bilingual outreach across all of our outreach platforms. This effort will be completed in-house using existing staff time. And if the budget is approved tonight, we'll just use staff time for that. And that concludes general government.
I've got a question. On the emergency preparedness? On the emergency, thank you, on the emergency preparedness, who does, who gets that $25,000?
Great question. So this is a huge lift, as the council knows, we have not updated our plan since 2013. So we will be hiring a consultant to ensure that we can get that over, over the finish line. So that $25,000 is set aside for the consultant.
Because we used to do that in-house, but.
Yeah, that's a great question, Councilmember Clark. So we are running into staff constraints with everything else on our to-do list. And this was one that we did highlight as a, as a major need in order to, to complete that emergency operations plan. It is a high priority of the council and the staff. And so we did find the need, the great need for a consultant to ensure we get that over the finish line. And we did pursue grant funds for that too, I will mention. And unfortunately, grant funds are not available for these types of plans. They are types of plans, they are available for the hazard mitigation plans, which we already did conduct, and we did get grant funds for that.
And Councilmember Clark, I feel like once we get it to a really good place, it'll be something that I think staff could be able to take on as making small updates. But it really is in need of some expert support at this point. And then I think we'll be able to keep it up from there.
Yes, I think that's, that's a good plan to keep that in mind, yeah.
I will be on administrative services department. We're projected to operate about 1.7 million for '25, '26 and 1.9 million for '26, '27. The funding supports core administrative operations, technology systems and centralized services. This slide highlights key initiatives, investments and updates supporting the efficiency, transparency and modernization of the administrative services department. Some highlights, we want to, we want to submit the investment policy for certifications to the California Municipal Treasurers Association for a former certification ensuring compliance with industry best practices and enhancing transparency and public trust. Another one is we want to transition our budget document to be eligible for the GFOA standards award. So we're going to basically revamp this document. And some of our professional contract services, we want a Microsoft 365 transition, upgrading digital infrastructure for better communication, collaboration and data security. We also need to update our five-year financial plan for fiscal year 2027 to '32 to ensure long-term fiscal sustainability and guide, and a guiding resource, guide resource allocation. And then we have numerous policy updates that we'll be doing in-house, so we'll continue to do that. Any questions?
No, a question, just a comment. I think it's great that, to see all those policy updates that are being done. I recall you saying in the past that those have been some, some areas that you wanted to tighten up for efficiency. So it's, every time one comes back to us that's been approved, it's really great knowing that those are codified and kind of getting us in better shape going forward. So thank you for your work on that.
Yes, thank you.
And I will just be reviewing community development department. But of course, our director is here to answer any questions specific to the programs. So two divisions, the administration and code compliance. And underneath that is the various programs within each division that you'll see in part of the budget document. Next slide. The highlights here is executing a contract to launch the new online permitting platform. So that's going to, again, that goes under that operational efficiency and as well as transparency. We're really looking forward to that. Continued work on the general plan, coastal land use plan update. I think I missed on the previous page highlighting that there are 2.3 million for fiscal year '26 and it goes down in '27. And I mentioned earlier, that's for things like, you know, that consultant no longer being needed for the general plan. That's all grant funded anyhow. Oh, I put that as a bullet there, so I would remember it is there. And then continued implementation of the housing element programs. We are certified, but certainly the work has just barely begun there. Short-term rentals has been a council goal priority, things that the community is interested in. So regulations to improve enforcement capabilities there. And then improvements to the business license review process, which is something else we're hearing from the council and the community that we're looking forward to working on. And if you have any questions about these items or any of the items throughout the budget book, Nick is here to help answer any questions.
Yeah, one question. So I know we had talked before about wanting to reinstate the third code compliance position. And I understand from the greater context of the budget that that's a cost that maybe isn't going to work out right now. But is there any, any value to trying to make that a part-time position that we can look to leverage into a full-time position in future years? Or would that not make sense for what those duties would be if, if we know what, what those duties of that third officer would be?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, so Larson through the mayor. So it is something that we looked at, you know, at this point, we're part of that conservative budgeting. We are optimistic that we're going to get some things accomplished here in this next year that could make that more of a reality for the next year. But we're just unable to budget for that at this time. In addition, I've been contacted by residents inspired by Councilmember Nemora's words at an earlier meeting about private support and funding for, for various things. And there's some interested groups in raising money to help support that position. You know, we can't, usually it's not best practice to accept outside donations for a full-time position because that's an ongoing cost to the city. But in a part-time capacity potentially, and of course, that would be based on, you know, what the duties of that would be and whether the donors would be happy about those, those duties or the scope that I think the department would need and not limiting it to any specifics. So I do know there are some private things moving. And then the city, of course, is hoping to get some things done this next fiscal year to help make it more of a reality for '26, '27.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, one other position, I don't know if it falls in this one, is front office, like a reception, a receptionist. Has that position been filled or are we still using it for split, split jobs?
Yes, Councilmember Nemora through the mayor. So, yeah, the, that front office position is currently, that spot is occupied by our management assistant, who, you know, we have a number of, as you kind of mentioned, you know, hybrid type positions where our code compliance officer is also our animal services person. And, you know, the number of people here wear many hats. And so they're helping administratively support for general government department and also helping to serve that front office support. But it's not, you know, the, the position that it was before. And all of these positions we're, we're looking at for the future. I know one of the things we want to accomplish over the next two years is getting a map for the department's needs and staffing. Is there areas where we're potentially have more staff than we, than we need because things have changed? Clearly, things like long-range planning, we're very understaffed. And so we added staff in there. And so wanting to look and map out what our staffing looks like for the future is something we plan to do. And then actually having the revenues to be able to support those positions will be the next part of that. And if there's no other questions, I will move on to public works. So very healthy program budget, just because of the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm overstepping my bounds here.
No, thank you, Michael, for jumping in. I want to make sure I provide support to you. So, yeah, no, I get the pleasure and John is here to answer any questions. So the public works department, it does have the largest department budget in the city. You'll see on this slide, we have a proposed total of 13 million for fiscal year '26 and then 12.3 million for fiscal year '27. And the department oversees, as you all know, critical infrastructure and essential services throughout the city. The three main areas are our engineering division and capital projects, maintenance of streets, parks and facilities. And then our sustainability and environmental division with overseeing resource conservation, solid waste and watershed management. And then I won't go into this in too much detail because I already talked about capital improvements a lot. But over the next two years, we do have 13 capital improvement projects proposed. Priority is to critical infrastructure and essential service, services buildings. And then we have 8.2 million budgeted for fiscal '26 and 7.5 million for fiscal '27. Other highlights here?
Ryan, real quick, if you can go back to that last one, our slide shows 11 and we had 11 listed.
Yes, I clarified that. I'm sorry, should have clarified. We made one small correction. It was 11 just for fiscal '26 and it's 13 for fiscal '26 and '27.
Got it. And that's why there's a reduced, reduced budget then?
It's repetitive, the, the two and following year are accounted in the total 11.
Right, the two and the following year were accounted in the total of 11. Lisette's correcting me, thank you. Okay, moving on. So public works department budget highlights. So in addition to capital projects, the public works provides year-round maintenance of our streets and public rights of way. So the city has allocated approximately 1.1 million in both fiscal '26 and '27 for street and sidewalk repair, traffic signal and lighting, lighting maintenance, landscape and janitorial service, and then also biohazard cleanups in public spaces. And then for fleet and department, sorry, the fleet area, maintenance of city parks and facilities, it's also a significant area of investment. 1.7 million in fiscal '26 and 1.8 million fiscal '27. This will fund arborist services, landscape and janitorial contracts and mechanical and electrical system upkeep across city buildings and park facilities. And then lastly, the department maintains the city's fleet of vehicles and equipment with an annual budget of $43,000 in both fiscal years. And all of these support contract services for mechanical work and auto body maintenance. And that's it for public works. Happy to answer any questions and of course, John is here as well.
I have a question. Where did the, the dollars we had allocated for an electric street sweeper go? Did they get just allocated throughout?
Yeah, that's a great question, mayor.
Items or?
Great question, mayor. Stefan is our clerk tonight and I think he'll be able to answer that question.
Yeah, so we had originally encumbered something like 732,000 for the electric street sweeper. Once it became apparent that it wasn't going to come through production in a reasonable amount of time, we backed out of that agreement. And we opted to purchase a street sweeper for about $110,000. So we used under $110,000 of that original 732 and then everything rolled back to the major asset replacement fund. So, and it's still there.
So Parks, Rec and Community Services Department, 2.3 million is projected for both fiscal year '26 and '27. They have their administration and then their community garden division, age well, library and aquatics. And you can see they have several programs under each, under each of those divisions. Go to the next slide just to show some of their highlights. Oh, I have the mouse, I guess I'm talking to myself. And then we, so this is really great. You know, I just, it's, it was a difficult process, but really great to go through it with the team that we have. So I had to smile when I saw this because, you know, we're talking about all of the various, like, oh, what does '28 look like? What are we going to have to cut? Can we support, you know, avocado festival? And so you want your team to still stay positive and optimistic and creative for what they can do. And I think this really speaks to it. So the pool is typically closed on Sundays. And we've had limited opportunities to offer swim lessons, which is something, you know, as a coastal community, we really want to offer. And so by going through and increasing our rates and, and then doing some math here, we found that if we offer swim lessons on Sundays and we can fill 80% of the class, and this is not uncommon for cities to have like a projected amount that you have to hit for the class to, to run or they don't run it. So if we can fill 80% of a class, we can operate it on a Sunday, provide this wonderful service to the community and do it at no cost to the city. And we're utilizing a resource that we're paying for anyway. So I think there are several examples of this throughout the budget, but this is just one that being passed from recreation had to make me smile that the team is still looking for ways to, to add to community wellbeing, even as we're tightening in other places. Additionally, fundraising campaign for pool renovations is now something that has come under, meet this department and that there'll be significant staff time dedicated to and helping to shepherd that. And then, and then of course, our Parks, Recreation, Community Services fee increases as we'll continue to make those efforts and dedicate staff time towards that next year. And then all the rest of the programs kind of speak for themselves in terms of what the highlights are for that program. But anything throughout the budget, happy to answer any questions about programs and Jeanette's here to answer any detailed ones.
So for some of these Parks and Rec services, like with Age Well or, or the pool, or I remember you had mentioned about new potential funding partnerships, like a Friends of the City or something like that. Are those, would that be something, is that part of the plan for going forward, looking at donations and those types of possibilities for some of these programs?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, so Larson through the mayor. So these are things that I don't know that I've said at a council meeting yet, so just for the public.
You did.
Oh, okay, I did. All right, I wanted to make sure I provided some context there. So there was, yes, so the city was in the process of opening up a Santa Barbara Foundation Fund for the community center. The city had had been given that 850,000 and then 850,000 was taken away, but we put in so much effort there. And we're in the process of forming a steering committee for that, which is a requirement of the fund. And our hope is, is that, yes, that could evolve into a, you know, Friends of the City type thing that could help support specifically Parks, Recreation and Community Services types of programs. Because with our current budget situation, these are things, often in many cities, recreation is like some place, the first place to get cut. But, you know, judging, looking around carpentry, this is a place where I know the community really likes to invest in and support. And so I think it's the city's responsibility to at least create some sort of a mechanism or way for people to support. Because often they're asking how, how do I get involved? And so that's one of the things that Jeanette and her team will be taking on in these next couple fiscal years. We're excited about.
And along those lines, so I saw that it was mentioned that looking forward in the next five years, there's going to be a lot of different projects that, that are going to need support. Like I think the lifeguard tower at the end of Linden and some of the playground equipment being ADA. the playground equipment being ADA accessible. Um, is there any sort of idea of which, which of those are the most pressing or might need the most, um, attention so we can keep it in mind looking forward?
I'm gonna have Jeanette come up and help me with that one.
Good evening. Thank you for the question, Vice Mayor through the mayor. Uh, it's hard to answer. They're all important to me and my team. Uh, I think first and foremost, the pool is the priority simply because, I mean, it, not just because it's so well-used, but if we don't start fixing it and investing it, it's gonna become very expensive very quick. And it's gonna result in emergency shutdowns years down the line. So we need to get ahead of that as much as possible. Um, second to that, really those projects all are about accessibility. Um, the accessibility to the library and Age Well or Vets Hall and Veterans Hall Campus are really important. Just, they're so heavily used. Um, so that would be the next priority. And, and the playgrounds as well, ensuring that all of our playgrounds are accessible for anyone, um, who have mobility issues or disability would be, um, important. So unfortunately, I know, I'm saying they're all a priority, which therefore makes, um, none of them a priority. But I would say first and foremost is the, the pool, just because it will get expensive quick. Um, then likely the library, the Veterans Hall Campus, and then, um, the playgrounds.
No, it's, it's helpful just to have that in mind as we're, as we're thinking ahead. Uh, but while I have you up there, um, for, in terms of the library's literacy coordinator position, how far out is that funded? Because I know right now there's a big demand for tutors and, and the program is just going really well. And so how, can you remind me how far out is that?
Yes, uh, the pro- program is going very well. Thank you. And, um, hats off to Stephanie, our literacy coordinator. She's just doing an amazing job. The program's funded for three years through donation through Friends of the Library. Um, so I think, uh, we're probably about not six months into it yet, probably a little less. So we have roughly about two and a half years left.
Okay.
And the original thought was at that three-year mark, there might be, um, some state funding. I believe that would become available for literacy programs that we could apply for to continue it on. Um, but of course, that's always down the road. So we're, we're not sure, but that was the original kind of goal, long-term.
Got it. Thank you. I appreciate that.
No further questions?
No, I mean, not for me.
Uh, so, we, we made it to the end. So just in, you know, in summary, um, you know, as we celebrate our past, look to the present and future, um, we are fiscally resilient. I want to, you know, assure people of, of that. We are still, have strong footing to be able to make these, uh, decisions and things we have to make. There's significant investment in there for things like state of the city and district-supported events. And these are gonna become, uh, more important than I think originally when we were, you know, part of it, of course, is transparency. But now, as we are in this, this fiscal position, education, that part of it's going to be very big if, if we, you know, expect people to rally around these various things. Um, we have the growing financial pressures. We don't want to, uh, you know, sugarcoat it either and, and say that this isn't coming. So that's, uh, was very apparent throughout this presentation. Um, our, our long-term focus still, we want to assure people is on sustainability and quality of life. Um, you know, things like our senior services and expanding our library and all those things still. I want to assure the community that we don't take our, our eyes off of that, uh, while we're focusing on these other things. Um, we, we spent some time talking about Prop 218 and again, that outreach education and public engagement. It's gonna be big tackling our assessment districts, the park maintenance tax, and then looking at, um, revenue considerations, which will be coming back to your council at a, at a future meeting for things to consider. And then, uh, you know, ultimately, I think what, what people are interested in is, you know, our investments in the community and those service levels. And so we continue to prioritize those. Um, and we, we are constantly looking for operational efficiencies. Mayor, you did, wanted us to bring back something about in-house versus outsourcing. And so, uh, we're still looking into those things to make sure we're as efficient as possible. And then, um, looking, you know, as a community that wants to maintain that small beachside town and does not want to turn to, you know, uh, major development projects as a fund of, of revenue, uh, the grants, the donations, the public-private partnerships or way for the community to get behind the city and help support some of these, uh, services as I think we have a wonderful history of doing. So that completes, uh, my presentation and happy to answer any last questions. Uh, the next slide is, uh, the recommendation. I will not read it all, but it's up there and, um, uh, and a sample motion as well.
Okay. Any questions before we go to public comment? Saying none. I'll go ahead and open up public comment. I do not have any speaker slips. Do we have any? Oh, one is Go ahead, Annie.
Hi. So in listening to all the comments, it sounds like the grants are a great source of revenue. I was wondering if anybody, if we have an employee in the city that researches availability of grants and does the grant writing? Just curious about that. Um, I went over the budget worksheet. I didn't realize that there was the budget and the worksheet. But I have, um, just a couple of questions. Under legal services, there are several categories. And I don't, I don't know what they all mean, but I did notice that under litigation legal services, it has jumped considerably to $100,000. And I was wondering what the explanation for that was. And I'm also wondering what the housing fund is. And I think that's it. Thank you. Yes. Go ahead, Patrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will fill out a form. Forgive me, um, and staff. Wanted to make a couple observations and just one, one specific question. Um, you know, there's a lot of sausage making behind all this, you know. So one of the things that I've come accustomed to and the things that I do is to simplify it quite a bit and just a couple of suggestions going forward. Doesn't have anything to do with what you're doing today. Um, but I think of large budget activity in, in three sort of buckets. Assumptions right up front, things that change the most during the period that you're evaluating, and then risks and opportunities at the end. And I'm struggling to pick out those pieces out of what you've presented. I think it's all there. Um, on the assumptions part, it seems that, that obviously the taxes are the biggest chunk of the revenue. And it seems to trend pretty naturally from period to period. But there aren't any real background on the assumptions. Um, so it might be helpful for the audience to understand what the, what the analysis really relies on for the forecast of those taxes. If you sit, you stand back from it and you look at what's going on in carpentry, uh, population's flat, but there's a lot of investment coming in. You know, you look at Linden Avenue and all the properties that are happening and all that sort of things that are happening in community development that increase fees. Are we getting something from that? And it doesn't, it doesn't show up in the numbers. It may be in there, um, because there's a lot of puts and takes in that sausage making. But, so what are the assumptions? Um, the other one is expenditures, things that change the most. And the one that jumps out to me is on page 16 and part, and page 31, major capital is a category that swings wildly. And it doesn't seem to have much of an explanation. So I think it'd be worth to sort of understand what's in major capital and what's changed over the last three periods. And then lastly is risk and opportunities. I think we've talked a lot about, or the staff has talked quite a bit about expecting that there'll be some opportunities for, for additional revenue. And I think there would be, creative bunch and, you know, dedicated council. But what are those things? And, and then there's risks. There's the flip side of opportunities, which is risks. You know, what, what can happen to drag that down. Um, so just some thoughts about it. The only, really specific question I'm asking is, is what is in major capital on page 16 and 31? Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. I don't have any other speaker slips. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have one Zoom speaker. I'm Rita. Go ahead.
Um, I have the same question Patrick had about major capital. I was never clear while going through the materials or with your presentation, what major capital is, what's under that category. Um, and when Ryan said what RMRA was, I couldn't quite get what that is, that one column. Um, and why, uh, capital improvements going down in '26, '27 because they're so high now? Or is it that we don't have that many capital improvement programs planned? And then I wanted to know, how does the city manage or how do the he- administrative heads of the different departments manage the expenses when, how often do the people who work under them submit their expenditures? Or is it just assumed that they haven't gone over budget? Because I've heard through the last few years, you know, and there's no question, the value of the library, but that, that the amount of money that was originally planned for the library from the Measure X funds, they ended up spending more. That information might be incorrect or, you know, Friends of the Library is giving more than they used, that, than they had planned to or whatever. Um, I'm just wondering how the administrative heads have, what control mechanisms do they have to make sure that their departments are not overspending the estimates that have been projected? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
We have no raised hands.
Great, thank you. So I will go ahead and officially close public comment. And I'll go through, there was a handful of questions, so I will look to staff to see if we can answer those. Um, and please correct me if I miss any of those questions. So one was the grant writing and what, um, what that looks like for us. I know we recently hired a contractor. And then the increase in legal services and what housing fund is, along with major capital and what is under that category, and if we can talk a little bit more about those fluctuations. And what our current processes or administrative process or control mechanisms to ensure that we are not overspending or that department heads are not overspending.
Yes, Mayor. Uh, yeah, thank you for the opportunity to answer these questions and, and thank you for those questions and, um, suggestions. I mean, our, our hope is to make this easier for the community to, um, digest. And so those, uh, that feedback is, is welcome for anyone listening to this later and, and any additional suggestions on how to improve. We, as mentioned earlier, that GFPA, Government Finance, uh, forget the, oh, Office, uh, has certain standards for a budget. And we look forward to, in continuing to meet those and make this, um, a more transparent process. And again, appreciate the feedback. Um, I will echo what you said. We, the city recently brought on a, a grant consultant that does this and meets with our department heads monthly to identify opportunities for, uh, grants. Uh, I, I think they're, this is what they do. They're bread and butter. So they're very successful at applying for these grants. And also it ensures continuity with, uh, reporting and things. Um, even if we have staff change over, they're helping us to, um, do that grant administration as well. So we do have that. Um, I will turn it over just for a second right now to, uh, Jenna to talk about the litigation. Uh, we, we do definitely work with this office when setting our, um, numbers.
Thank you, Michael. Um, council members through the mayor. So the question was specifically about why the increase in, uh, a litigation bucket for legal services. And really, always we do endeavor to try to have a healthy litigation fund if we are to need it. I believe in the past, it was significantly lower than what has been budgeted, uh, going forward. But it is funds that we hope not to use, right? And we've been very lucky, as you all know, over the past several years to really be able to avoid, um, litigation generally. But this is, you know, similar to what Michael has been talking about with the reserve fund. This is something of a reserve fund as well, so that it is there if we need it, if the council decides that, um, litigation is the right answer to something that comes up.
And then, uh, you know, for the, the major capital and that swing, so that includes our CIP. So we, we went through all those slides and discussed those various projects. Uh, that number's included in there. And so in '24, '25, the city made a significant, uh, contribution to various CIPs. And this was that available fund balance that the city had accumulated in various grants. Uh, and that included the completion, uh, this was like $6 million for the pavement project. And this year, the 2023 pavement, I think there's like $30,000 in here for some, some design work, but there is not that money for construction. And so that's like a, a $6 million dip in, in what we're doing for CIP. Um, I'm getting back to my other notes here on some of the other questions. I'll bring up, uh, Nick Bobrov to talk about the housing fund.
Thanks, Michael. Uh, the housing fund is an account that was set aside a number of years ago, primarily, I think, from, from one lump sum of an in-lug fee payment for affordable housing. And that money is used to help pay for some of our annual expenses for different housing programs, like the rental housing mediation program, uh, where we contract with the city of Santa Barbara to provide that service for carpentry residents. Uh, historically, the housing fund has also been used to fund both the awarding of loans and the administration of the program for our down payment homebuyer loan program. Uh, currently, those funds are all expended and have been, have been lent out. So we're waiting till some of those borrowers repay their loans, then we can reopen that program. Uh, but historically, it's been, you know, kind of a, a fund that's operated off of the initial endowment, if you will, and then the, uh, interest or dividends earned when we get those loans paid back. And so it's not something that has constant revenue coming in. And that way, that's why there's only limited expenditures going out, because we're trying to make this fund last as long as we can.
Thank you, Nick. Um, there was a, a question, Emreda had missed. Uh, the RMRA is the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, and that's SB 1, uh, dollars that the, uh, city receives there for th- those, um, restricted projects. Um, there, a question about, uh, the library and, uh, that, that amount there. So just wanted to point out that Measure X, unlike, um, some other funds where they have to reach that two-thirds and it's a, um, a, a special tax that's limited for something, uh, Measure X is a general fund tax, essentially is, is the same as the general fund. And so the council does have that discretion in increasing the amount of funds that are going towards the library for various programs and the ability to, uh, reduce it. And it's been at, you know, the council, um, approvals that those various programs have, have increased. Um, and then I'm going to turn it over to Lisette. I think the last one was about the accountability, um, piece.
Um, so the city uses, uh, financial software called ENCODE 10. That, uh, software provides us, uh, many tools. We have a purchasing, uh, um, module where, um, at the beginning of this fiscal year that we're gonna start, anything that's over $5,000, we will do a, a PO, a requisition, which encompasses the funds. So that means that we, um, the department heads have already, um, tied up those funds that what, they won't be able to spend it on anything else because they know we're contractually obligated. Um, secondly, uh, each department head is responsible for each of their, the budget and all their line items. They get monthly reports and, as well as when we develop this budget, we actually have detail in each of the line items. So we know exactly what we're spending it. So as we are hiring or purchasing, um, we are looking at our budgets to make sure we are within what we budgeted. Um, if not, then they have to reconsider to say, okay, if it's higher than they thought, then they will have to reevaluate that. Um, oh, and, uh, and we also, um, every month, we meet with the finance committee and we review every, um, all the activity for the general, uh, Measure X, um, all the, um, all the revenues and expenditures for each month are our expense. And we review where they at, uh, year-to-date. So we also, if there's any, anything that has been, um, significantly higher or lower, we, I, we report that to finance committee in advance as well.
And we also provide expenditure reports to city council. Um,
I hope that answered the question. Uh, I do want to answer one more in regards to assumptions. On the- Under the city managers, on the budget document, under the city manager's transmitter letter, we provide a lot of detail on how the line items of how we came up with the estimates. So I would recommend that citizens have additional questions, read it on, starts on page six of the budget document.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to council if there's any other points of discussion or comments to make prior to a motion.
I just want to make one comment, which is that, you know, this is my first time through with the budget, and I've had a lot of questions, and I've been confused by many things. And every single time, I've found the answers very quickly and easily. And I think that it is a very, a point of pride to see our finances be taken so well, well tended to. And I just wanted to appreciate you for that, so thank you.
And I'll, I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution number six four zero five, six four zero six, six four zero seven, six four zero eight, six four zero nine, and six four ten, as read by title only, approving the municipal budget for F Y twenty twenty five to twenty seven, year end amendments for F Y twenty twenty four, twenty five, setting related appropriations limits, making year end amendments to the F Y twenty twenty five, twenty six budget, adopting salary schedules for F Y twenty twenty five, twenty six, and then also bringing in those edits that we had mentioned regarding law enforcement costs for e-conveyance and avocado festival.
Second that.
Great, we have a first and a second roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Solorsino.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayor.
Aye.
Councilmember Nomura.
Aye.
And Mayor Alakon.
Aye. Well, I just want to say thank you so much to you. Thank you to city staff. I know that this was a lot of hard work, a lot of thought. And I really appreciate your guys' integrity and desire to be as transparent as possible. I know this is a plan that has been in the making for months, if not up to a year, in terms of moving to a two-year strategic plan and a two-year budget. So I just want to share my gratitude to you all, so thank you.
I would also like to say that I thank the city manager, because the input came from all of the department heads. One of the rare occasions where we heard from everybody. So you've created quite a team there, congratulations to you.
And my apologies, I think we have one more public comment on Zoom. Alexandria?
Hi, I'm so sorry. This actually has to do with an attachment in the consent that's already been approved just an hour or two ago. But I think it is appropriate as we look at that, the budget. Further understanding of H D L's purpose for the revenue opportunity study for potential revenue enhancements for the city. I'm only bringing that up at this point, because it does seem appropriate as we look at the budget from an overall perspective. So just wanted to make that comment out there. And seems like an important piece. Thank you, and great job on finalizing the budget.
Thank you for your comment.
Yes, I'd just like to say, you know, I think, I think this has actually been a very good year. And it was especially, you know, when you're contemplating two years, it was, you know, the last few years, doing the budget felt like getting a root canal. It was really hard. But this, I mean, this, this actually went well, I think, because it's so well planned and we've been working on it for so long that, that everything, you know, finally falls together. And, and it's, I, I think the public's starting to get a, a feeling that the, you know, a municipal budget's not like anything else. I mean, it's a, it's a highly complex, delicate mechanism. And it's, I mean, it's changing every minute. You know, all these, all these numbers that we just already talked about are a little bit different right now. And it's, it's just keeping all that, all that stuff balanced. And, and coming out in the end is, is, it's really an amazing thing. And, and of course, it, you know, it's, it's like, the, the budget tells a story also, you know. And, and, you know, your budget should, should tell you a story. And the story is we're spending more money than we make at this point. And so, but, but the, the finance committee is working on that. Our staff has come up with really a lot of good suggestions. And we review those and we, we do a little bit of research on them. Then we do some more research on them. And then we, you know, so we're, we're, we're mindful of that. And, you know, I think, I think we're going to be good.
All right, we will now move on to the next item on our agenda, which is item number nine, adopt resolution number six four one one, amending the conditions of employment for miscellaneous unrepresented and management personnel, including updates to the merit pay cap, leave accrual clarifications, health insurance contributions, and other clarifying revisions.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. We'll go through this one quickly, but also effectively. Make sure we get all the information for you guys. So yes, this item tonight is a presentation of resolution number six four one one, which proposes updates to the city's conditions of employment document for the city's miscellaneous and management employees for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. So for tonight, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to have Teresa Elasine here, our management analyst, to present the, the majority of this presentation, but I'll just provide a brief intro here. So we have our background. Teresa's going to walk us through the administrative and key section changes. I'll talk a little bit about the values of those changes. We'll have the staff recommendation, and then we'll ask for any questions. So why are we proposing these changes here tonight? So these proposed changes, they, they really help support one of the city council's key strategic goals, which is to build and maintain a high-performance team here at City Hall and other, other places where our city staff work. Specifically, the updates are designed to ensure fair and competitive compensation and benefits, promote employee satisfaction, retention, and work-life balance, streamline administrative processes, and improve clarity, and then advance diversity, equity, and inclusion. In short, the, the key C O E changes that you'll see here tonight that Teresa will present to you, they really strengthen our ability to attract and retain the top talent that we have here tonight and throughout our city, and support effective service delivery to the community. There's also some changes that are more mundane that Teresa will touch on that are just some cleanup. Teresa and I went through the document in detail to make sure that this was a really clean document. So she'll touch on a couple of those. And then just for a background, the city previously had two separate conditions of employment documents. One was for management employees and one was for miscellaneous staff. That dated back to nineteen ninety two. That did create some, some kind of administrative burden and some confusion, because there was two separate documents. We merged those in July of twenty twenty three. The council did adopt resolution number six three three nine, which consolidated those into a single unified document. Thank you. However, this current version does expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And tonight's resolution six four one one continues that effort by incorporating, like I said, the updated language, the, improving some of our benefits in a small way, because we do have those budget constraints that we just talked to. We don't have a lot of money to work with to, to improve the benefits. But we did find a way to improve benefits, which Teresa will touch on, that have a small impact to the general fund. And then it'll present some upcoming policies for the upcoming fiscal year. And with that, I'm happy to introduce and turn it over to Teresa Elasine, our management analyst in human resources, to walk us through all the details.
Thank you, Ryan. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, the public. I'm going to walk you through the administrative changes and then also go through each of the section changes. So to begin with, the administrative changes. We removed the term unrepresented throughout the document, since both management and miscellaneous groups are unrepresented. So that distinguished, distinction is not necessary. Second, we took all the gender-specific pronouns and we replaced them with general neutral pronouns. And then lastly, to the document, we made formatting changes to improve the structure and readability, such as renumbering where appropriate, this proper spacing and consistent headings. These administrative changes do not affect any provisions or impact budget. And now I'll go through the sect, sex, sections changes. Section three refers to the compensation and benefits. Section four, leave regulations. Section five, legal holidays. Section eight, health benefits. And section eleven, miscellaneous policies. There's a number of sections, but these are the ones that have the significant changes. So begin with section three. Section three point three, base wage adjustment. We are reaffirming the five percent cap on merit pay increases. And this remains in place due to budget constraints. With last year's conditions of employment, we did cap merit-based evaluation increases to five percent. So we are doing that again for the next fiscal year. And also to section three point three, we are incorporating a, we incorporated a three point three percent cost of living adjustment. Three, sorry, three point one cost of living adjustment for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. And that was included in the budget that was just approved for the two-year fiscal year twenty five to twenty seven. Next, section three point eight is referring to overtime compensation, three point eight H. This change pertains to miscellaneous employees who are non-exempt employees who may be subject or required to work overtime. We removed the requirement to submit overtime preferences in writing. We now have electronic time sheets, so employees are recording their hours worked in the pay period, including any overtime. So through that process of their electronic submittal time sheets, they're indicating their preference on how they want their overtime recorded. And section three point eight H provides employees an option to cash out up to eighty hours overtime. And we just made clarification that this is going to be tracked on a fiscal year. Section four, leave regulations. The first change, four point one, management leave. We removed outdated language referring to flex time with last year's change to the conditions of employment, the current one. We used to have what's called flex time. Management employees are not, they're not, they're exempt, so they are not allowed to get overtime. And so previously, we had what was called flex time, but that's been replaced with a management leave. And in the current C O E, there is a management leave schedule. So any reference to flex time, we can remove. Four point two, annual personal time off, P T O. We added language to allow new employees to use P T O within their first thirty days of employment. And this is also through approval by the city manager. Sometimes we get a new employee who, when they take the position, they've already made plans for vacation within their, you know, first few, few weeks of work with us. And the way the C O E is written is they can't use it until after working thirty days. But through city manager approval, we can now allow them to do so within the thirty days. Section four point four, leave accruals. We added a reference to the annual P T O schedule. So there's a reference in sub, in section C, referring to that schedule. Section four point five, annual P T O accrual schedule. The content was reorganized for clarity. There was no change made to the accrual rates or the eligibility. We just restructured that section. Four point eight, annual P T O bank cash out options. In order for an employee to cash out any P T, P T O hours, they must use forty hours of leave and have a balance of eighty hours. So we changed the language here to allow employees to use any type of leave, not just the P T O, but they may also use floating holiday hours or management leave. And so that's just allowing them to take that leave. And also, we also clarified with this one that it's tracked on a fiscal year. And then four point twelve, bereavement leave. We updated the language to reflect the legal requirements in California. I believe it's A B nineteen forty nine, which requires agencies to provide up to five days, with three of those days being paid. So we are in compliance with this. We just added the language so that we are, that that language is there in the conditions of employment. All of this section changes to section four, or all the amendments to section four are administrative in nature and do not have any budget impacts or change any of the provisions. Section five, legal holidays. This is also administrative change. Miscellaneous and management employees were provided twenty-four hours of floating holiday on a calendar year. And this was effective last year, effective in July first. So for that first year, we prorated the hours that were given. So now that this is in place, floating holiday hours are given to employees on a calendar year. So the language referencing that it's prorated is no longer needed. But there is a, some language there that does indicate that floating holiday hours will remain prorated for new hires. So depending on when they start in the calendar year, we prorate the hours for the year, and then they are given those on a prorated basis. Section eight, health benefits. Eight point one, life insurance. Employees are provided a life insurance benefit with a monthly premium paid by the city. Language is added here, just to clarify that anything over fifty thousand dollars is taxable for I R S rules. Next, section eight point two, health insurance. So currently, for health insurance, there is an employee employer cost share for the premium, the monthly premium. The employee's contribution is based on a formula, which factors salary and increases of the health plan that they select from year to year. Calculating the employee cost share is very time, time-consuming. It's not something our payroll system can, is capable of doing. We've reached out to our vendor, Tyler, our financial system, and they're stumped by our complicated formula. So we do keep a, a tracking on an Excel spreadsheet. It's very complicated. Each year during open enrollment, when employees are deciding on benefits for the next calendar year, they want to know what their true out-of-costs are for benefits. Because this, the cost share for health is based on this formula, sometimes we can't give them an accurate figure, or that might change during the year if there's an increase in, to their salary. Sometimes, depending on when their evaluation is given, if we don't have that evaluation completed and signed off by the city manager for merit increase, it might result in a retro adjustment, which means retro adjustments to this cost share as well. So it is confusing for the employee. And so it is also administrative burden for human resource, human resources and payroll. So the recommendation is to pay the full cost of the monthly premium. Our analysis, we estimate this to cost about fifteen thousand dollars annually. And that was included in the budget that you just approved tonight. Eight point nine, flexible benefit program allowance. We removed the word wellness from this for clarity, with additional language to accurately reflect the benefits purpose. This allowance can go towards out-of-pocket benefit premiums, flexible spending counts, and optional four fifty seven contributions. This allowance increases two percent annually. So we made the change to the C O E to reflect the current year's amount of one thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. And for next year, going up by two percent to one thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. Eight point ten, outside medical coverage. This is the benefit for employees who waive medical coverage through the city. Typically, a spouse might have, they might have insurance through their spouse. And so we added language for clarity, just to indicate that an employee who receives this benefit, that they receive fifty percent of the base plan. The base plan is the plan we use for the calculation and what we're recommended, what we're recommending for the city to contribute the amount for the monthly hundred, hundred percent city-paid premium. And then if they're declining for themselves and their depend- And then if they're declining for themselves and their dependents, I'm sorry, if they're declining just for the dependents, then they receive 25% of the base plan. So it's 50% if they decline for themselves, and then 25% of the base plan if they're declining, they're enrolling for themselves but declining their dependents. And section 11, our miscellaneous policies. 11.5, translation pay. We added this as a benefit for employees who regularly translate or interpret in another language. There are two levels. Level one, for those that do conversational translation or interpretation, and that is a $50 bi-weekly benefit. And level two, which is translation and oral interpretation, that's a $95 bi-weekly benefit. There is an assessment that is required, and the city manager must designate that that position is, is one that utilizes this skill on a regular basis. And then 11.6, move-up pay. We merely just removed a section there that was duplicated, so this change does not, it's just for clarity and doesn't affect this section. So those are our key section changes. I do want to add that miscellaneous and management staff have been provided this information, and we did share this with SEIU for their consideration, so they're taking a look at that, and we're hoping to get a response from them by July 8th. So in closing, we believe these changes reflect best practices and streamline internal operations. Most importantly, they align with strategic goal number five, to build a high-performance team. It's a broader strategy in that providing the slight benefit changes help us stay competitive. The changes also help with employee morale, they create, they're creating a place where employees are, are excited to work because they feel supported. That concludes our presentation. I don't know if you want to add anything? We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you for that report. Any questions from council?
Sure, so for the changes to the health contribution, so that adds a 15,000, but it sounds like there are also cost savings in terms of staff time, and can you talk a little bit about that, what that trade-off is?
Yeah, so throughout the year, we have to do recalculations of an employee's salary changes, but two peak times are beginning of the fiscal year, beginning of the calendar year, when the premiums change beginning of the calendar year, so based on the calculation, the employee's cost share, then we have to now calculate the employer's cost share. And then the fiscal year, a majority of our employees are on a July 1st evaluation, and so when we do those evaluations, we're having to do those calculations again. And then also, as I mentioned earlier, if there is a retro adjustment, we're having to do these calculations on the retro adjustment and then the new salary. And then, I was going to add one more. The thing I was going to add is, this is all on a spreadsheet, and so it is a cumulative increase year to year. We're on year four of this cumulative year-to-year increase, so I could be on year four, another person can be on year two, so we're having to manually track each person individually, their salary, what year they, what year in the cumulative increase they are on that schedule. So it is veritism, and it can potentially lead to errors.
Got it, okay, that makes sense, that makes sense, yeah, just, just since there is the increased cost, I just want to understand that a little bit better. And then just one other quick question. So in terms of the translation pay policy, we had one before, but was it only for represented employees? Can you just clarify that?
And if I can just, one more thing on the healthcare, it's not just human resources, we're also having to coordinate with payroll. So it's, you're looking at four people, looking at these calculations, and then verifying, and then double-checking again, and inputting those changes, so it's a lot of administrative behind-the-scenes.
Got it.
And thank you for your question regarding the bilingual pay. SEIU, we have, eight positions are designated as represented by the bargaining unit. There's eight, yeah, eight positions, and they negotiated to have this benefit, so they've had this in their MOU, their memorandum of understanding for many years, and as we were looking through what changes we could make, this was one of them, to be, to expand this benefit to be equitable for all the employees.
That's great, that's, that's a really good, I think, positive movement in that direction to expand it to all staff.
Yes.
Thanks, thank you. Those are my questions.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and open up public comment. I do not have any speaker slips. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have no raised hands.
Great, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 6411, amending the conditions of employment between the City of Carpentaria and miscellaneous and management personnel for the period of July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2026, and authorize the city manager to implement the changes effective July 1st, 2025.
Second.
Great, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. It doesn't look like we have any legislative updates, so let's go ahead and move to committee reports, inquiries, and other matters presented by councilmembers.
I have one. I was at the elected leaders forum for housing and homelessness on June 13th, and the big aspect of this meeting was we went over the point-in-time count, results for the county, and the big takeaway is that we have asked the point-in-time count folks to come to our city council meeting and present their findings for, for our city specifically, so we can look forward to that in an upcoming city council meeting.
Great. Thank you. Any other updates? I do have a question. When is the Fourth of July parade? I feel like I haven't heard anything about that, and typically it's paired with the rods and roses.
It's June 28th.
Oh, June 28th, okay, at 3 o'clock. Thank you. All right. Everyone will be here at our next city council meeting?
Yes.
Yes, okay. We officially will adjourn the meeting at 9:43 PM. Thank you.
Good job, Stephen.